Please stand for the.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Trustee Paulie.
Excuse the absence.
Trustee. Trustee Laffin.
Here.
Clerk Palavich here. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Here.
Trustee Curl.
Here.
Trustee Reiner.
Here.
Supervisor Skibby.
Here.
At this point in time, the adoption of the agenda. There are some corrections and additions under new business keeping it linear is number 11, fire department letters and which are before you. And number 12, which is the policy and procedure committee. Badges would be an easy way to look at it.
Oh, that's not what this one is. Because policy and procedures at number five.
No, that's different.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the ID badge. Okay. Okay.
Are there any additions, substitutions, corrections to the amended agenda? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, motion approved.
We have a motion to approve the amended agenda. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of amending or adopting the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say. This is the first opportunity for public comment. This public comment is for any of the business items on this agenda upfront. The second public comment opportunity is for comments in general. So if there is any.
You want to say that North Point Shores.
Yeah, and nor if there is comments regarding the North Point Shores special assessment, that can be actually taken place during the hearing for that special assessment district. So with that being said, is there any public comment in person? If so, will you stand at the podium and state just your name for the record?
I'm not sure. The article in the newspaper said you were going to discuss drafting a letter here. Is that what you mean by item number 11 fire department letters?
That would be the one in the same, sir.
One in the same. Very good. Then I have a couple of comments. I appreciate your moment of your time on. I'm sure you folks have appropriate expertise in administration and finance, and I think that's good. If you're going to discuss the things that the article says you're going to discuss with surrounding communities. But you certainly need firing EMS expertise. And I would certainly trust that you're going to include at least the fire chief in those discussions. I think that examining those things are probably worthwhile. But I think they need to be open, honest, transparent, and inclusive. You're talking about the livelihoods of people and they have suspicions and concerns when they see those headlines. And without knowing the real information right from the horse's mouth, so to speak. That's a morale killer. The second thing I'd like to mention is that, and this is also from the newspaper, there was a stand alone article next to that one about the manpower issue that the fire service faces. And we all face that. Every single community, even in finding career people. Rest assured that in the streets, regardless of the organizational structure that you may deem appropriate, the firefighters work very, very well together. Every municipality sends its people, sends its equipment without hesitation. It's working very well. And my comment would be, I'm not sure that your efforts should be spent in worrying about the organizational structure over our heads. If you're going to spend time and effort, I would suggest it be on helping us solve our big problem, which is lack of manpower. We all have a lack of manpower and your efforts and smarts and work in that area would be greatly appreciated. Without the manpower collectively, we can't provide the citizens the service that they deserve. So I thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Any further public comment at this point in time in person? If not, is there any public comment online? If so, please use the bottom task bar under the more ellipsis to raise your hand or to send a message so that we can identify you and address public comment. Seeing none, move forward to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? We have a motion on the table to.
She made that.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Curl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward to do the first item of all business, North Point Shore Special Assessments, Resolutions three and four. At this point in time.
Do we have to make a motion to open up the public? I'll make that motion.
We have a motion to open the public hearing in regards to the North Point Shore Special Assessment has been made. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, supported to open the public hearing for the North Point Shore Special Assessment. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please. Fair opening then.
Oh. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Curl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. The public hearing is now open in regards to the North Point Shore Special Assessment. Tim, would you like to start by introducing question to this in the public comment prior to the resolutions at hand?
Well, I can make up just a few preliminary comments, and this is the hearing on necessity of the project. There, if it moves forward, there will be another hearing set regarding the specific special assessment role. So any objections to the project going forward from property owners need to be in writing, doesn't have to be elaborate, could just be sign in, put a page out, a name and address, and then the applicable statute. In my lap, I was just reading, provides that the township board may proceed to carry out an improvement as provided in this act, unless written objections to the improvement are filed with the township board at or before today's hearing. As follows by the record owners of land constituting more than 20% of the total frontage upon the road. So that's what tonight's public hearing is all about. Again, another public hearing would be set regarding the special assessment role that the township prepares that determines what the, how the costs are allocated to the various property owners. All our notices discuss that, $600. So public comments allowed during a public hearing? If if you wish to object to the project going forward, let the supervisor know and he'll provide a way to put that in writing.
With that being said, we did receive two written objections from property owners within the district. One of which was, was asked us if we could read it before this meeting. So I'll get this out of the way. That way we can hear all the comment from anybody that's in, in, in present with us this evening. This was comments from today from Ms. Suzanne Laverty, which we know is in that district. So my name is Suzanne Laverty and my family owns two lot in North Point Shores, one since 1953. I'd like the township board to consider two topics. Special assessments and road committee behavior slash responsibilities, special assessments. At the last township meeting where the NPS special assessment petition was discussed, the board indicated that the current special assessment of $600 is for current road maintenance and improvement only. If that additional, that if additional projects such as plans to have North Point Shores paved in the future was intended, a separate assessment would be required. In 2011 or so, a vote was presented to NPS residents asking whether or not they wanted a paved North Point Shores versus a well-maintained gravel road. Residents were informed, the vote to pave one by a single vote, results counted only by one person, the one who requested the vote. No several, no separate special assessment was presented or approved specifically for paving project. Therefore, funds from the assessment approved for current road maintenance were used and the condition of our current road declined. Since that time, a great deal of money has been spent on engineering studies and applications for grants. Land at the entrance to NPS was acquired and plans to purchase the turnaround at the end of North Point Shores is of interest. A new culvert greater than 30,000 was installed and another upcoming expense forecasted for 36,000 for unknown services. My whole query began when I sent an email to board members asking what the forecasted expense was for and never received the courtesy of an answer. More on that and item number two. Last year, a new member joined the committee, someone with a great deal of experience with aggregates and as it turns out resurfacing roads. His name is Tim Cordison. He is employed with Lafarge. Tim was finally the only committee member to respond to me. In our phone conversation, Tim told me the idea of paving North Point Shores was not sustainable or affordable for residents. He in fact said he would need to sell his home and leave North Point Shores if that happened. Tim shared a recent project he participated in to pave three miles of road, a road that had a much better base than North Point Shores. That project, Tim said, cost over $3 million and the cost to do something like that on North Point Shores would be at least three times that cost. If what Tim says is true, our current board has wasted thousands of resident dollars on a project that was never sustainable to begin with. My neighbors have warned me that Tim may deny ever talking with me. I, on the other hand, felt Tim was a man of integrity and ethics and would not act in such a way. I've participated in many committees through the years, business and ad hoc voluntary, working for the people you represent, asking questions, answering questions, addressing concerns are important since they provide votes for members and dollars to spend in residents' best interests. Months ago, I sent the North Point Shores president a request for board member emails so I could send a request for information. I was told by the president that he and I could discuss via phone. I indicated I wanted my request for information to be made to all members so it could be discussed and replied in an email. My request was refused. I did eventually get email information and sent my request regarding the 36,000 forecasted charge for road improvement. What was the expenditure for? Was it for work already performed and we owed that money or work scheduled in 2023? I sent that note more than six months ago and I still don't have an answer. The bylaws this road committee claims to follow specifically states that the board treasurer shall ensure that the expenditures for maintenance and repair of association property and other any other expenses incurred by or on behalf of the association are properly recorded. What would be an, what would be an appropriate reason for a committee member, the president, to not openly share that information when asked via email versus only by phone? Isn't it best that all residents receive the same information to reference and ensure everyone is on the same page? The bylaws also state that the board of directors shall appoint a roadway maintenance and improvement committee. A really great way to get continual resident feedback on how they would like to see their road improved or maintained. For example, one of the plans of this committee is to change the shape of North Point Shores road around the S curves. The township has copies of quotes for this work and I believe it was budgeted in 2023 upon a petition approval. While this may be of some benefit, residents should have some say in this plan. By the way, there is no roadway maintenance and improvement committee per the bylaws. Our road committee has five members, yet one person holds the title of president and treasurer. He also releases 98% of all correspondence. So is basically the secretary too. Though there is, though there is named secretary. A president treasurer who will only answer residents' questions by phone unwilling to share information related to expenses incurred using resident money should not hold both of those positions. It seems a real conflict of interest. Additionally, his unwillingness to put much in writing creates suspicion and mistrust. Another very simple example, on the last petition issued, the president indicated the committee had worked with the township board for weeks on this new assessment. The township supervisor indicated he'd never been involved. Why? As a township board, you felt the need to require another petition earlier this year to ensure that North Point Shores Road Committee was in compliance with the law. I, as a resident, am asking you to consider the way this committee is structured. It's unwillingness to share open and honest information in writing and when asked in clear disregard for the very bylaws it uses. I ask the township board to require the North Point Shores Road Committee to either abide by its current bylaws or create new ones for resident approval. Perhaps something is that, perhaps something that includes a cap on spending X amount of dollars without further input and or approval from residents. I also ask that separate president and treasurer positions be required. If you ask this board to provide you with all the work they have done over the last 12 years or so, you may find more dollars spent on a project that required a separate assessment and less on what is meant for the continued maintenance and improvement of on our current road. Thank you for your consideration, Suzanne Laverty. So that was one letter. If there's other, this is the opening of the public comment period for the special assessment district of North Point Shores. If there's additional public comment, please stand at the podium and state your name for the record.
Okay, so what do we have to do? My name is Helen Spooner. I live on the point shores. Okay, and I object to this latest. Thank you. I object to this latest petition because number one, I don't think people really knew what they were voting for because this petition really favors about 15 to 20 people who can have three lots or three parcels bundled into one, so they only pay $600 for maybe three parcels or 300 feet. I pay $600. I have 100 feet, so I pay full price. They get two for the price of one or one for the price of one. I mean, you know, two for the price of one or three. That's not fair. And I don't understand how our board ever let this go through. And they did not talk to you guys. They did not talk to us. There were no meetings. There was, all there was, was they sent the petition and said, hurry up and get this back. Hurry up and get this back because we have to get it, you know, going. Okay. So I formally object to this because it is not fair to everybody. And you know, somehow we have 93 parcels, but we now are only getting paid for 79 parcels. So that's a, you know, like $8,000 difference. Which, you know, I think people should know that we're not getting that much more money, which we should. So basically I think our board has so much wrong with it that we cannot discuss anything with them. They get mad. They don't have meetings. They don't communicate anything. I mean, I can't even say that long enough or enough, but it's just, it's pathetic. Basically, they are, don't ask, don't tell. Board. They don't want to know what the people want, want to done with the road. And they won't tell you what they're doing until it's done. So I mean, I really, oh, there's just so much I could say, but I'm not going to. And also, basically, one person runs the whole show and that's Joey. I mean, the other people are just yes men for him. I mean, I thought maybe we had somebody. We had a few people there who were maybe different, but it seems like pretty much everybody just goes along with Joey. So since this also is not a tax. As you said, you can't tax the lots. Is that correct? Because we.
We've gone over this several different times in terms of the special assess, special assessments, as is all of our tax bases based upon parcels.
Right.
Parcel in the zoning structure allows by state law the affiliation of abutting parcels into one combined parcel unless it meets a criteria of a subdivision versus meets and bounds or crosses a section line. Those are the only two instances where parcels cannot be legally combined.
Okay. So, but that's for tax purposes, but the special assessment, that's a little different, I think. Seems to me.
We gather special assessments through the taxation process. So they're one in the same.
But there, but it's not a tax because I can't use it on my, like, let's say I itemized, I can't use that $600 on my taxes because the IRS would send me a thing saying it's not part of the taxes. It's a special assessment.
It's a special assessment, but it's collected through the tax program. So it's, it's very much like the recycling surcharge. It is not a tax. It's affiliated with your tax bill because that is how we as a municipality collect the money to be the fiduciary.
Okay.
The means of a special assessment.
And if I could just add to that, and also, I mean, on the treasurer, but you know, we could send out your tax bill. We could send out your special assessment. We could send out the recycling surcharge, but it's all combined, just.
And I don't mind that. It's just that, you know, now I don't know. It just seems like somehow we should be able to charge people for each parcel they own or each lot. Actually, the whole subdivision is made up of 43 parcels in the subdivision, in the actual subdivision. And then there are like 20 on one end of the leaps and bounds or whatever you call that and X amount on the other. So it seems like somehow we should be able to put in there that you might have a parcel, but your parcel includes three lots.
There, there's the two legal methods of special assessment are now have been brought to this board. The first was a straight apples to apples by linear foot assessment that failed. This is the other legal means, which is by per parcel. And so it was by representation of this district brought forth as it currently, well, after legal had reviewed it, made the corrective changes. But this is the second opportunity by just a generic $600.
Right.
It's not the township's position. We are just the fiduciary. We cannot intercede into your homeowners association bylaws or give recommendations that was mentioned in this letter. That is not our function. You are a homeowners association that has bylaws and I would say use those bylaws and open communications amongst yourselves because.
There is no open communication. There is no anything. And I don't know how we can do it because they run everything. I mean, Joe runs everything. He runs any kind of well, if we have, if we're meeting, if we're, have ballots for let's say the, the board. Joe sends it out. Joe gets everything back. His name is the only one on it. So you don't know who sent any of those. And that's just wrong. And, and I don't see why the other people, the other board members don't actually see that there's something wrong with the way they do that. But they don't because everyone believes Joe somehow. So, thank you.
Good evening. And I'm John Briggs. And we have a place that we live more than half the year out of 8610 North Point Shores Road, and we have owned that property since 1981 when I bought it from Gary Partika. And I would say that I think we finally as an association have got the process right with your help. We're paying for access to the road. It doesn't matter whether you have 30 feet on the road, 300 feet in the road. It doesn't matter whether you have three parcels. You're having access to the road and it doesn't matter whether you have a lot like Helen's. She has a new home on it and somebody else has a small home that's old. They're all paying the same. It doesn't matter whether you have a sandy beach or a stony beach. It makes a big difference to value, but it doesn't change the access. Plus, we have a lot of people who are not there full time. And several of them have come forward and said that they appreciate the fact that they're paying for access. They're not because even if only go up here three or four times a year, if they have that property, they're paying their share of that access. So I think we've got it right. I think maybe the property owners need to sit down, have some better conversation. I feel sorry for Joe because he does stuff because nobody else wants to to take it on and it's not an easy task. And, you know, being involved in this from beginning, a lot of what I see in Susan's letter there, you know, part of it's correct, part of it's not correct. You know, we've, there've been somebody spent on some boarding, seeing what's underneath. We know on the S curve that there's a lot of muck. There's a lot of pee down there. So that's going to require extra work. We got some other areas where we've got the old cedar logs breaking apart. You know, we've still got ongoing stuff down there. So improvement might be just replacing what's not good as we go ahead. I don't, I don't see any of us talking about paving the road or anything, but I do think we've come up with a fair way where everybody who has access to the road pays a fair share. And whether down near the end of the road where we are and Helen is, or whether they're right after that first mile and a half, we're all paying for access. We're also paying to support that, that turnaround at the end so that when everybody comes in with the big tractors with the earth, with the construction equipment, things like that, they need to go down to the, make that turn, you know, we've had to support that. So I think as a group, even though the association doesn't, doesn't handle itself probably very well publicly, I think we do a pretty good job out there. I think we're getting it straightened out better. And I appreciate what the township's done and forcing, forcing us to move ahead with that. So I, I hope we continue and we can get this approved and we can get it on the tax bills. We can get the revenue coming in. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Hi. Good evening and thank you. My name is Dan McNeil, 7398 North Point Shores. I've lived here for three years. I was raised in Alpena. I left in 1973 and I'm back after 48 years. And I love North Point Shores and Thunder Bay. Let me say I completely disagree with Helen's assessment of the board transparency and communication. She's wrong. The board is really assembled for the road. And they've done a really fine job and it's not just Joe. I forget the man's name, the new person, Tom, whatever, has responded to Ms. Lobbity. But let me, let me really get to my points. Listen, people buy the property out there. For the, I'm sorry, did you want to respond to me? You.
No, I, I just encourage, if, if anything, this is an open forum for discussion of the district, not an opportunity to point fingers. So I.
Well, Helen pointed fingers. I'm sorry.
I think you have a valid point coming up so that, but I.
That's, thank you very much. I'm assuming that, that owners of the parcels voluntarily purchased those parcels because of the beauty of the area. I also have to assume they purchased those parcels knowing full well the condition of the road. A downfall to the beauty of once you get to your parcel. You also have to assume that those purchasers assumed the risks of if there were upgrades to the road, which we all hope there will be and are going to be of the cost of those upgrades. Now, if you bought two or three or inherited two or three parcels, that was also voluntary. You could have declined. You could have chosen not to either accept the inheritance or purchase them. If you wanted a lot of road and therefore probably shore frontage, you didn't have to buy that many. But it should be understood and in a tacit understanding that you are assuming a risk if there are upgrades. And anyone who purchased out there who doesn't want an upgrade is living in la la. Obviously, it's destructive to your vehicles. It's dusty. It's et cetera, et cetera. We all know. There are options for those who disagree with that. Sell one. Sell two. Sell all of your parcels if you don't want to pay a special assessment. If the road upgrade special assessment is that important, well, then apparently the property that you own is not all that important. So as my fellow prior speaker said, the issue is road access for all. As my fellow prior speaker said, the issue is road access for all. Linear footage. On the road is the fair way to. A collect for the maintenance of the road. I happen to own only a hundred feet. If the Labbeties own three parcels and have. Uh, three hundred feet, that's their choice, that they can also make a voluntary choice to change that. So. Uh, anyone who doesn't want a better road out there. To have their residents. It's just an, it's disingenuous. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. McNeil, are you in favor of the special assessments?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
You figured that out, right?
This is still the public hearing for the North Point Shores. If there's additional public comment. This is your, your avenue. No, miss, I want to make sure that everybody's been heard if there's an opportunity. Hello, there is only two. Don't we have somebody online?
Yes, I'm sorry. I, this is Suzanne Labbity.
Okay, I read your, read your letter.
Yep, and I thank you so much for that. And I just wanted to say that I have absolutely no objection to giving any money for this road. Um, you know, we've been around for seventy years. My dad used to give a thousand dollars a year to this road long before anybody required it. I was here when this road was a two-track, so I appreciate all of the work that's gone into it. My objection is not. With the six hundred dollars, it's with the management. Of that situation. And I do believe you already answered my question previously by saying there really isn't anything you are able to do. About that. And so if that is the case, then uh, thank you very much. I've put my, my voice forward and that's all I have to say.
I, I, I read your letter under the three minutes of public comment that are the forum for this. I'm being gracious this evening because we did not have an exact time on the first. Uh, discussion, um, but to keep things moving along because there is quite an in-depth uh, agenda. As it stands right now, I believe we only have uh. Two, three, two written and then plus.
Uh, Helen and then the two written.
Yeah, so. We don't have enough. This is at this point in time. Uh, it does not meet the criteria of twenty percent. Uh, that would uh, be the. Vocal minority to um, kill this special assessment district. Um, there are some, some questions and comments inherent that this board is not the overseer of a homeowners association. Or its function, I would suggest that the residents have a good barbecue. And start talking about their neighbors and or tearing down fences. Um, but at this point in time. Uh, we have resolutions three and four.
Do we need to close the hearing?
You can do a motion to close the public.
I'll make the motion to close.
I have a motion on the table to close the public hearing. Is there support? Supported by trustee Reiner. Uh, further discussion? Seeing none, oh, sorry.
Could I ask you to just, uh, yeah, number one, I think you've already made the comment that. We really have no supervisory position over this homeowners association. They need to either get together and. Live by their bylaws or enforce the bylaws and go to the meetings and elect the people they want. Is there anything that's wrong with that statement, Tim, or?
No, no, that's correct. Uh, and really our, our role here is limited to the statute addressing. Uh, special assessment projects. If we had received the twenty percent level projections. Then the statute says another petition would have to be filed in order to override the twenty percent. So that's really what we're focusing on.
And would you agree with me? I think the supervisor Skibby's plan or suggestion, not plan, suggestion was the best. Have a barbecue, get together, talk, have, but the courts are an option. It was a last resort from my point of view. Would you agree with that?
Court uh, would be tough. Uh, court, uh, tax tribunal, if a person disagrees at the next hearing regarding. Being allocated a certain amount of money under the role. Then it's to the tax tribunal who would then see whether this process.
So once it's on the roll, it's, it's no longer even anything other than a tax tribunal question, not a court question.
That's correct.
Unless you disagree with the tax tribunal, then, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And uh, yeah, the practical matter, the, the special assessment doesn't last forever, five years.
Five years.
So it's gonna be an ongoing. As you've mentioned, you know, work with the board, get on the board. Figure out what you want to do going forward.
And the other clarification I would request is that the other, there's two methods. The other method was, was opposed by twenty percent. And so this is the only other method available. And if twenty percent opposed this. There's just nothing gonna have, there's not gonna be an assessment.
Sorry, the, the public hearing has closed, Mr. LePape. I see that you wanted to give comments.
You have a potluck every year. You're the pole every year for the board. I am, the no taste.
God bless. Uh, any other discussion? To the motion on the table.
Trustee Carl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. So at this point in time, we move forward to resolutions three and four. Uh.
Pre-addressed uh, the fact that the public hearing was held, that the twenty percent level wasn't reached. And that the board is making a determination to move forward with the next step. Of the special assessment district process.
At this point in time, I'd entertain a motion to uh. For passing resolutions. Can we do them one?
Let's do uh, three, no, we'll do them independently.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to uh, support resolutions, well, resolution three in regards to the North Point Shores Special Assessment District.
Does it have to be read?
I won't read it. I've been, I've been asked not to wear, read anymore, whereas is forever possible.
It doesn't have to be read, then I'll make a motion that we approve the special assessment resolution number three.
We have a motion on the table.
Supports that.
Been supported. Further discussion? Seeing none, uh, we'll call please.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers, yes. Trustee Carl.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes, now onward to resolution four.
In four uh, is. Uh, more straightforward, just simply setting the hearing on the special, the proposed special assessment role. That will be en filed with the township offices and it directs the clerk. Township clerk to uh, provide notice. Uh, scheduling the hearing for, for its next meeting, October twenty-third of this year at six P M.
Is there a motion to uh? Bring forward resolution four?
So I'll make that motion.
A motion on the table to uh, approve resolution four. Is there support? Uh, it's been moved, trustee Reiner.
Okay.
Uh, it's been moved and supported. Further discussion? Seeing none, uh, we'll call please.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Plavich, yeah. Treasurer Ellery Summers, yes. Trustee Carl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. And that concludes the uh, business for the North Point Shores Special Assessment District this evening. So we will be bringing back uh, at our next subsequent meeting. Uh, the final resolutions in regards to the North Point Shores Special Assessment District. Okay, moving forward with all businesses, the paid on call raised tiers. I'll give a moment for the residents. Uh, so the next item of business, the paid on call uh, tiers for raises. Um, Michelle.
Um, I think we have tabled this. I don't think we're ready. Back when the raises, we voted on it, I think in May or June. We're supposed to come back with tiers and a reason for accountability on keeping track of their time and I don't think we've gotten. So plan for the accountability yet.
Do you make a motion to postpone uh, this whole business?
I would like, yeah, to postpone it.
To the subsequent meeting?
To the next meeting.
We have a motion to postpone to our October normally regular scheduled October board meeting. Is there support?
Yes.
It's been moved and supported. Uh, further discussion? Yes.
Uh, can you explain that a little bit? I'm, like, what, what are you waiting for? Or what, what?
Accountability. Um, the chief was supposed to write out the process of how we are going to. Have accountability that hours worked, were.
For their time sheets.
Yes.
Okay.
And that hasn't been done yet, so.
That has been talked about in.
It hasn't been talked, but it has not been finalized.
Point of order.
Yeah, point of order has been called. Um. Has not been finalized. Um, so with that point of order, uh, we have any further discussions, seeing none?
Until the October meeting.
Till the October.
Twenty-four.
Yep, I believe it to be the case. Um, any further discussion?
So, so accountability wise, in terms of the number of, also like, like a, like a time card or, or?
We're working on the time card.
Tracking, this was, this was. The tracking of it was inherently, we all knew as a board that. Without a doubt, uh, our paid on call deserved to raise. It'd been a considerable amount of time. So that, that was the given. Um, my fear of moving forward with these races without a, a level of accountability have come to fruition. And so we're just working with the chief at this point in time. To bring forward uh, this mechanism which.
Let me just explain, currently from my understanding is that after each call, a spreadsheet is filled out of who went on that call and how many hours they worked. Then, when they fill out their time sheets, they're going to this spreadsheet, taking that data, putting it in their time sheet. Giving it to the chief who then takes those time sheets and compares it to the spreadsheet. So our accountability. For correct time sheets is that they're filling it out and then the chief's just. The spreadsheet is used by both parties.
There's no checks and balances.
No checks and balances.
So it's would like, would live. When, when an event happens and nine-one-one is called, that, that would trigger a time, right? But we don't necessarily know who's responding.
Correct.
Okay, and so then when, when the uh. When the call is ended, then somehow nine-one-one or somebody's contacted or sort of shuts the clock off, for lack of a better phrase, right?
That's all kind of murky waters for me that.
Right now, currently.
So we know when something begins and we know when something ends, we'll say who showed there.
We know when the call has ended, but. Recently someone's got shorted time because the spreadsheet showed that they were, the call lasted two hours, but did not include the time they came back to the. Fire station and cleaned hoses for another two or three hours. So they were shorted by using that spreadsheet.
Oh, okay.
So we need to get a better method.
But we need some.
To make sure we're not overpaying or underpaying people.
No, so we want some better reconciliation.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, a reconciliation.
Okay.
Okay, so uh, seeing no further discussion uh, to postpone to the subsequent October meeting. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose the same. Postpone. Uh, into new business, uh, budget adjustments, um, what you have before you are. Oh. We have um, some general fund uh, through the clerks department to move around some monies for. Treasure, I do apologize, the treasurer two-five-three uh, for two new computers. Uh, so she made some budget adjustments. And then also uh, public safety, um, taking a grant uh, funding uh, mechanism and rotating that into expenditure G Ls. Uh, with also and revenue. So that our books match. And then in uh, the enterprise fund, um. Is just shuffling around to increase uh, year-end grounds, maintenance and repair costs uh, that could be potentially foreseeable. So at this point in time, uh, fairly straightforward in regards to budget adjustments, I'd entertain a motion uh, to move forward with the budget adjustments as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion on the table. Is there support? Support. It's been moved and supported to move forward with the budget adjustments as presented. Uh, further discussion?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that um. This budget adjustment is just for one computer. Maybe there was enough money and water to buy the other one. So this is just for one here.
All right, that answers my question. Where there could be two upcoming.
Right, ones for the water department, ones for the treasure office.
One was budgeted rent expense.
That was the amendment.
We're taking money out of the rent. Because we don't pay, we, the water department doesn't pay rent.
Yeah, that's what I wondered, why did we, but. Talk about that in March.
Like December.
So we have a motion and support. Further discussion? Seeing none, uh, we'll call please.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers, yes. Trustee Carl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes, uh, moving forward in new business item number two is the L forty-two-nine. Uh, Michelle, would you like to touch base?
This is our annual L four-oh-two-nine that we need to complete and get to the county. So we can collect taxes in December. Um, the only difference between this year and last year's is the fire equipment mileage is. Has expired, so it's not on there.
Uh, I'll entertain a motion to move forward with L forty-two-nine.
So moved.
I have a motion on the table. Is there support? Also, trustee Lappin got the support. Further discussion? Uh. Everybody in favor of uh, moving forward with L forty-two-nine, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Uh, now the next item of new, new business is um, the resolution regarding uh. The policy and procedure for the inspection of real properties upon him. I know that you uh, work on this with Mr. Burke, anything?
Uh, Ellen is always good about coming to us when uh, he's got a resolution, then he needs to help him do his job better. And uh, any compliance with the law, and this is uh, that category. Uh, to implement and maintain a property inspection program to have accurate property record cards for property tax purposes. So this confirms that that's uh, the township's task and uh, it makes a safe expedition. Uh, happy to.
With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution regarding policy and procedure for the inspection of real property as presented.
I'll make the most.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support? Or it's been moved and supported. Further discussion?
I'm sorry.
I just had a quick question. So is this something we haven't, we don't do this every year?
Uh, the resident, no, this is a newer, we have, we usually will do things in terms of at our annual meeting for. Guidelines for board review and other uh, functions of the assessing office, but this is actually uh, coming out of the changes from the S T C and state tax commission.
Oh, okay.
Following all the, the new changes out of Lansing.
And this is an accountability.
Correct, yeah.
Thing. Alan's basically saying, I will show you that I'm doing twenty percent each year.
Yeah, no, and that is basically mandated out of Lansing to, to show that they're following the same uh, property format and policy for. Adjusting real property. Further discussion?
I just have one, one curious question. Uh, real property. Versus personal property. So a real property or structures. But. Personal property, as I understand it, could be a, a shed that doesn't have a foundation, essentially is. Purchased off-site and you just sort of plop it on skids. Am I right or am I?
You're about personal property taxes.
I'm talking about, does it, does a shed that doesn't have a, does a ten-by-ten shed, for example, that you buy from. Home Depot or something that, that doesn't have a foundation.
Building on leased land.
What's that?
Building on leased land, like if, if you have a trailer park for that, and I'm just talking about that, but I think that would be building on leased land.
No, I'm, I'm talking about if I buy.
If you buy a shed for your own real property. Okay.
And I don't have it on a foundation.
I don't know what the threshold would be between uh, Michigan building code and a foundation versus non uh, secure. I know that uh, in terms of. N B C criteria, there is no need for a building permit under two hundred square foot. That being said. Um, if you are going to affix said structure, even sub-two-hundred square foot, you should have a building permit.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I guess you asked the question because I see a, an increase in, in, uh, why, why build a, why build a place? And I can just sort of tilt it up and I don't think it's assessed.
I think anything under two hundred square feet doesn't require building permit.
Yeah.
You know, so like twelve by something. Passes muster, but if you go beyond that, you gotta have building permit and inspection and.
It is, it is, uh, I, it's definitely a growing scenario, especially with the, the, the cost per square foot to build, uh, stick built, uh, structures.
Yeah.
Um, uh, an ancillary to, uh, the pop-up sheds, uh, are storage containers.
Exactly, exactly.
And so we, we have identified, uh, those in our zoning ordinance, um, and probably could do even a better job defining them moving forward as it currently stands. Uh, they are limited to a three-year, um. On any given parcel, they can only be on that parcel for three years.
In that spot or on the whole parcel?
The parcel, trust me, I've had the old shell game.
So, yeah, yeah. Well, I, I guess I, I, I wonder because I wonder if there's, is, if the township in as much as our. Our cost of doing business is based upon that, that if we're not, if, if there's a, a revenue lost by, by not assessing that as. Real property or is it just personal property? Well, you know, where's?
That's, that's a good question. That would be, I would say that the best answer that you get would be straight from Alan Burke. As to how, what is that criteria and definition? Um, but yeah.
Got it.
Valid. That being asked and the discussion continuing anymore, for the good of the order, otherwise I'll entertain a motion or vote on the motion on the table. Um, a roll call please.
Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Lepin.
Yes.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving forward into, uh, new business item number four, another resolution establishing early voting precinct.
Guess I'll take that one.
Um, this resolution, I, we need to do because of the nine days of in-person only, early voting. We need to establish the township boardroom as a precinct for that. And I need to do that by resolution.
There's no other discretion in that, right? We just have to establish a place because it's state law.
Yes, well, I mean, there's criteria. To where, I mean, I can't do it at private place. Privately owned places, it's gotta be a public place, easy access, handicapped accessible.
And unfortunately, our principal precincts are at, uh. Houses of worship and what, what church would give us free reign for nine straight days. Affiliated, yeah, given the consideration.
Especially since it's two Sundays.
Yeah.
Right, that will be open, will be open. Nine days in a row.
Be interesting to see how you still.
Red ball.
You're looking at, right?
Yeah, like you're, you're looking at someone who's going to be working, yeah, these two nineteen days in a row will be working.
So with that being said, uh, to entertain a motion to move forward with the resolution establishing early voting, uh, precincts, uh, here at forty-three eighty-five, US twenty-three North.
Full moon.
We have a motion on the table, is there support?
Support.
Then moved and supportive, further discussion?
We supported it.
Uh, Laura.
Okay.
Seeing no further discussion, roll call please.
We don't have to do resolutions by. Roll call, roll call?
Can I say roll call?
Oh, yeah, I thought.
Uh, I'm losing it. It's been a long day. Trustee Reiner.
Without excitement, yes.
Trustee Lepin.
Yes.
Clerk Plavich, yeah. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes.
Sorry.
No worries. Got me down myself, that's okay. Okay, moving forward, um, it is, uh. I guess this would be a personnel committee and policy and procedure committee recommendation, um, both the chairs of each committee, I believe, are, uh, trustee Croll and, uh. Treasurer Ellery Summers. Um, this is in regards to, um. The, uh. Policy in regards to, um, employment of spouses. And so both committees have had the opportunity. Uh, to have. Documents provided, uh, to see if, uh, committees would change their position on this matter, I guess. Trustee Croll, in regards to the personnel committee, what were the committee findings and positions, sir?
Well, I think we've had, so we've had some discussion, obviously, I think, uh, nobody on the committee feels, uh. Comfortable since we have a policy in place, um. And I think we've learned some lessons in the past, which have, uh, kind of driven us in this direction, so. Uh, we didn't feel it, uh, that we should change it, um, and that's kind of where it stands.
Okay, and Ms. Ellery Summers, in regards to the policy and procedure committee?
And policy and procedure committee also met and had same discussion and. Again, we've learned from the past. That it is not a good practice to employ husband and wife together.
Family members.
Family members, right, not just husband and wife, but right. Brother, sister, father, son, whatever.
So with that being said, both committees that can only give recommendations have given the recommendations to the board. Um, is there any, there's no need for, or motion at this point, because the recommendations have been heard? Um. Any further discussion in regards to new business number five?
Uh, just one question. And, and I apologize, I did not review the, the language. Um, in, in the personnel. Uh, manual. But are, are these? People that would be in direct supervisory positions or just period? So in other words, if, if, if I'm a, I'm a, if I'm a department head, I couldn't. Uh, hire my, uh, my child or my spouse, because I would be direct supervising. Over them. But if, but if I'm in the, um, uh, clerk's office and a, a, a child is in the. In a department that I don't have any supervisory control over, uh, w- w- is that okay?
That is okay, like.
Direct supervision.
Right, I could hire Laura's daughter.
Okay, all right.
But Laura can't hire her daughter.
And I presume that if I'm an elected official. Um, then any family member would, would, uh, not be eligible for employment.
That I don't think is stated in the policy. I agree it would be a good idea not to do that.
Yeah, well, I, I'm just curious because in, in many personnel manuals, it would be having direct supervision over. So, okay, I just wanted to clarify.
And I think in this case, we've, you know, went through both committees, the only regress for, uh, that is to come the full board.
Yeah.
Um, so that's kind of how I got here.
Okay.
I'm not sure the answer to the question was correct, in, in terms of, I'm just remembering the past. There wasn't one over the other, was there?
I'm not sure what you're saying.
Well, supervisory person wasn't over a spouse in that case.
You mean our issues from the past?
And sometimes in some situations it was, it does happen like in the fire department.
Mm-hmm. Well, I understand that, uh, but I mean, I'm just talking about.
There was another instance, right, that wasn't.
Yeah, I, I thought our policy was broader than that, is my point, I wasn't sure that. That our policy doesn't say that. A spouse or a family member can't be. Part of the township employment if there is another family member already employed.
I think our policy, if they're dating it a lot of times, it's, yeah, supervisory position.
Okay. Any other discussion on new business, item number five? Uh, moving forward, uh, to new business six, uh, ten-ten, uh, computer quote, Laura. We've kind of already touched upon it within the budget amendments.
Um, um. So policy procedures met and we.
For computer call?
Yeah, this is computer.
Uh, I'm sorry. I don't know, I had it out of order. Anyway, um, so it, Rhonda's been having issues with her computer with. A screen popping up and so we had that checked, well, come to find out Kelly's computer is even older than Rhonda's. So it was recommended to purchase a new one for the water department and for. I mean.
They're over five years old.
Yeah, both of them. So, um, that's what it, this is just recommending purchasing. A computer, a new one for Rhonda and a new one for Kelly, one out of water department, one out of treasurer's budget.
So you, your, your recommendation is, uh, the subsequent quote from ten-ten for a total of two thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents to, uh, utilize fifty percent to come out of. Uh, two-five, two-five-three out of your GL, uh, seventy-eight, and then also out of the enterprise, uh, five-three-seven, seven-two-eight for computer hardware.
And in addition to that, um, the labor, the labor, I based that on a higher number, on five hours at ninety-five dollars an hour.
So, uh.
So it would be up to.
Up to not to exceed.
Right.
Two thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents? Is that your valid?
No.
Plus.
Plus the labor.
That, right. It's two thirty-seven fifty. Each.
Okay, so decide five hundred dollars. So, okay, so that would put you.
Thirty-one hundred.
Thirty-one, not to exceed thirty-one hundred dollars. Is that your, are you making a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that. Um, we purchased two computers, one for water department, one for the treasurer's office, not to exceed thirty-one hundred dollars.
Okay, we have a motion on the, the table, it says support.
I'll support it.
Okay, uh, we have a motion and support, uh, to move forward with the, uh, purchasing of, uh, two computers, one for enterprise fund water and one for the treasurer's department not to exceed thirty-one hundred dollars. Is there any other? Questions, because we have a motion and support, right? Not.
Yes, we have a motion and support.
My, my only. Is, is I recognize sometimes this can be a pretty slippery slope, but. We didn't go out for bid on these. Do you want to ten-ten because? That's convenient or?
Well, I guess you'd have to ask the individual department, but historically what we have done is because they operate all of our ser- servers and systems. It makes more sense to stay with the same company that you have, but besides bringing in a second, third party to have.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't disagree, and I, I know that, I, I've had, uh, personal experience with. The software guy blaming the hardware guy and the hardware guy blaming the software guy, so.
Um, we're wanting to change the whole system over to a new system.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, any others?
I guess, I guess I answered my own question, nevermind.
Copy. Uh, seeing no further discussion, roll call.
Trustee Lepin.
Yes.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers, yes. Trustee Croll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Okay, moving forward on the agenda is the, uh, fire department, uh, countywide radio purchase program, chief, would you like to take a podium?
Sure would, thank you. Um, also asked Ms. Elkie to be here tonight, just in case there was any questions from the county level. So she's, uh, done this with her presence, I appreciate that, Kim. Uh, it was on the, uh, last month's, uh, board report, uh, board, uh, items. I was not here, I was on vacation, and I guess there was some, uh, questions as to, uh. Why we were purchasing a mobile radio. Um, and also, I would like to point out, as of Friday afternoon, about five forty-eight PM, the exact. Him, uh, as I'll be, had sent the note out to area chiefs that there was going to be an increased allocation of three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fourteen cents per department. Whoever was interested in that, so along with that, uh, original, uh, board, uh, matching fund request I made back on the twenty-eighth of August. I've, uh, I would like to make a correction to that tonight, um, because I would like to include the purchase of an additional pager. Based on that, uh, money that's going to be available through the county, uh, so it would read on the original motion, it'd be two unification pagers. Uh, instead of one, uh, everything else would stay the same as the present time, the total would change, uh, to three thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents. Out of our GL of two oh five, three-three-six, eight-five-zero, uh, zero-zero-zero.
Can you, so to go back, uh, the total now is going to be three thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents?
Right, that would be, that would be our cost share.
Yeah.
I did not change the, the matching fund total up there, but if you just add the three forty-seven, uh, fourteen or three fifty-seven fourteen to that total, that'll be the, the matching fund.
Correct.
Which may still go up, we're, we're straggling along, we don't know which departments are gonna not use this fund.
Miss Elkie knows that I've already said, who's not, whoever's foot's not in the door, the charter township of Elkino will make sure that we grab the dustpan, so.
And I figured, uh, these, these radios and stuff will take up to four to six months, just to get, and probably three months to program, correct? So I wanted to start with what we know we have available to us now and get that, uh, coming our way. Uh, if something else opens up down the road, I'll certainly come back to this board and propose, uh.
So for clarification, the changes, and when I make, uh, amendments to let me know, because this would actually fall under an amendment to, um. The, the pack, so if you change this, you can crush this earlier. Um, so your total is, and the only change is subsequent to this, is one additional unification pager.
That's correct.
Only change, and then the tally is going from three thousand forty-four dollars and twenty cents. Uh, to three thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents.
That's correct, that's correct.
Copy.
Is, is that a reimbursement grant or is that? So do we have to come up with the full five thousand?
No, we have a, um, so. We, last year, just in case anybody's not familiar with the program, last year we threw a sealed bid process, we have a three-year commitment. From Grand Travers Mobile Communications, and they are giving us the state bid cost. For this equipment for three years, so last year they gave us the current state bid cost, this year we circled back to them, they gave us the new current bid state cost. Next year, we'll do the same thing. We pass that on to the fire partners in the county. As part of the ambulance, I don't know off the top of my head, the official name, but we call it the ambulance village, the ambulance and first responder village. Nine-one-one requests funding from that village every year into our budget. And then we do this sealed bid process to help the fire departments get radios. So what happens, um, Grand Travers has worked with us for several years on this, and they have it down to a science. They will bill the township for your share and they will bill the county for our share of everybody. So you will only receive a bill for, for your half plus any excess that you go over. And I did talk to our salesman on Friday to let him know that we had one fire department that was not going to participate this year. That I had spread that money around to the other departments. I believe everybody else is participating, but I don't know that everyone's going to spend their entire allotment. If there's any allocation left over, we keep circling it back through to try to spend every penny of that every year, because we feel that. Having radios that function. Are a critical component for our fire partners. So I called, um, our salesman on Friday to let him know that everybody's allotment had gone up. And I asked him to not finalize any totals on any orders that we've already submitted. Until we have all the orders compiled, so that we know exactly what everyone's share is going to be and that you get every penny that we can squeeze out of it for you.
Beautiful.
Um, trustee Croll, you asked a question that I think maybe you should have asked Ms. Elkie, uh, that brought us a, a little bit of fright in regards to eight hundred, uh, banned radios.
Well, so I know like, uh, for the county, for instance, for sheriff's office, we have, uh. Um, radios that are become outdated, they're not going to service them, um, there's quite a few components to that, but is, is that affecting the fireside as well?
Going to, um, we're still doing some research on it.
So, so a point of clarification to that, so we are making full-term investments that only have a shelf life of two years. Because that was.
I, no, I wouldn't say that, so I can't speak to the law enforcement radios, but the fire radios, and this is just my understanding, we're still doing a deep dive on it. So several years ago, you may recall, we received a gifting of radios from Genesee County. Um. Those radios are going to be ending their service life, I believe in twenty-six, but we are still doing the deep dive on that and currently. Getting numbers from the township chiefs, how many of those radios are still in service? When we received those radios, they were a bridge, not a long-term solution. We were thankful for the gift, but they have a limited lifespan because they were already. A number of years old when we. A number of years old when we received them, so they are gonna have to be replaced, um. I'm not sure exactly, there are a lot of conversations going on right now and I don't wanna get out ahead of the conversations we're having.
They will work until they don't, that's when you send them in for repair, that Motorola will not support that radio.
Yes, trustee Ryan.
So I, I'm wondering, are, are these radios obsolete because of age or are they obsolete because of the band, the, the monitor communicator?
Um, I'm going to say maybe a little bit of both.
Cause I remember when I was. With guys in the county board, there was something about eight hundred radios, that was the new and big thing.
Yes, so this is a motor roller decision.
Oh, what?
This is from the, the vendor, this is a motor roller decision that they are. Sun settings, sun setting those older.
Purchases our Kenwood radios and so it's not gonna be, it's gonna be non-moral.
Yeah, I think that in the generic and not running into any rabbit holes. But when I, as a, a, a board member here, that even with the potentials of new and a different manufacturer, maybe completely obsolete in. Potentially two years.
No, I, I don't, I. I, I've just never heard that two years mentioned before. We've had two years, but Genesee County had had them long enough. That they had spent several million dollars to replace them, so I would expect that they had them for more than two years, but I don't know that.
Any other question?
I guess I'm, wanna make sure I have this clear in my head, that we're going to buy these radios. And they will work beyond two years.
Correct.
Okay.
My question is a point of clarification to the conversation that was introduced by trustee girl is, and maybe there's different. And is, so Kenwood is a manufacturer. Decided, or Motorola, sorry, let me clarify, Motorola decided that their internal operations, they weren't gonna service the Genesee radios. Those were already pretty much past their livelihood by the time they made it to Elpina Town.
Correct.
So it's noted, my concern is, is there gonna be any, uh, negative impact to the lifespan of these new purchases?
No, no, it's apples and oranges.
There's nothing to do with frequency, then.
Correct.
And I will point out, I, I talked to, um, Grand Travers Mobile and the average age on the. The radios that we received from Jenny, Jenny County, between seven and twelve years old. So, so he's got.
And that was about three years ago, we received those.
Any additional questions for Ms. Elke or chief in regards to, is this item number seven?
Thanks.
We have a recommendation to move forward with the purchase of two communication pagers, uh, one mobile radio, one portable radio. For a grand total of three thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents to come out of GL two oh five, three, three, six, eight, five, zero, 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 zero.
We have a motion on the board.
There is not. I mean.
I do have another question from Ms. Elke.
Well, if we go to a motion, we can go into further discussion.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, is there support, motion on the table?
I'll support it.
It's been moved and supported for the discussion, trustee grinder.
And this may be smart for the chief, but also.
So what's our need? I mean, how many radios like this do we have now?
All right, I've got a list. I, I believe I provided that to the personnel committee.
Let me finish with Kim then first. Uh, now you just, uh, if you would, um, just, uh. Do we have to spend more than twenty-five hundred to get this grant?
No.
We have to match the grant.
So if you spend a thousand dollars, we'll match the thousand dollars. If, um, and then if you don't spend that other eighteen hundred dollars, then we will share that back around to anybody who still has an order. To fulfill, uh, does that help?
Yes, thanks.
So, uh, my question is, where are we using these radios?
Well, I've been using the ones we've gotten. Well, we have, we're, we're about nine radios short. Yep, no, ones, the ones are, are mobile, we do not have a mobile in our tanker, our engine three or a brush truck.
Would you please clarify the difference between mobile and portable?
That's okay, thank you.
No, I mean, you got it right, yeah, you can answer that. Oh, we got visual.
He doesn't have one from the township yet, uh, but this is what you consider portable.
That's a portable, yep. The mobile's in the vehicle.
The mobile's in the vehicle, so currently we have three vehicles. Our tanker, our engine three and our brush truck.
Thank you.
Which should be a standard procedure that you have a mobile radio on a vehicle. We should never be relying on, I'll pay you on a call, jumping in all these vehicles, especially when they don't have a radio. I don't have it exactly, so we have to have, and the tankers are more frequent in vehicles, so I want.
Just stay up that, to put that way for the minutes purposes.
Yeah, we won't be able to hear anything you say when you're.
Okay, sorry.
Um. So why are we getting, what's the use of a pager?
That's what you get notified on when you're sleeping. Or when you're out in Myers or Walmart, you're shopping, you're doing your daily stuff. Okay, it's a private channel that you don't hear everybody else's county radio traffic all night long. It's designated just for your department.
So would people have a portable radio and a pager?
Yes, they should have. Currently we're nine, nine short.
Of what, radios or?
Of portables, the ones I just showed you.
Portable radios. Okay, nine short of radios.
And I, I believe I provided that list to you, uh, folks, uh, in the personnel committee, cause you requested.
And how short of pagers are we? Does everybody have a pager?
Uh, a couple of them still have, um, well, Kevin Galloway, for example, was running a Maple Ridge pager until this last. And a radio, Ed's running a radio, uh, and, and a pager, so we don't have enough to.
How short are we on the pagers?
Four or five.
So just out of curiosity, so for instance, we have two firemen that have Maple Ridge portable radios. I'm just asking, would it be like part of mutual aid that? They could listen to both or use it for both?
The, the problem with that is, is.
Like Elpina Town or whatever, or is it?
Yeah, if they're, if they're over here working at, at our fire and they have a Maple Ridge portable and they're on the top of the roof and the thing tumbles off the roof or. Gets burned up in a fire, now we've just damaged their radio, so. How do we ask our insurance company to pay for Maple Ridge's radio? So communications are the, the most important thing that we could have on a fire ground. So getting a radio in the hands of everybody is the utmost importance.
I was just curious.
Yeah, the other thing is, is every time I keep my radio, even though I am on, uh, township full-time. My radio actually keys up and says Maple Ridge eleven, not Alpina Township M three.
Okay.
Yeah, so everybody's got a radio. They track every, every communication that we have, they actually track them by our radios. And our radios are actually tracked through nine-one-one dispatch, so all of our communications are recorded to who's ever keying ready.
Are you still in the Maple Ridge department?
Yes, I am, so I'm okay to call with Maple Ridge.
So when you're wearing that.
Yes.
And a call comes through, you're gonna know whether whoever it's for, right?
I got the pager.
One, one conversation, then let's keep it back to chief.
So, uh, let me clarify the pager, this is set up, so central dispatch assigns us a dispatch code.
Correct.
And this radio, when we've turned on channel one, we put in our charger at home at night. And the only call that we hear is Elpina Township. If we didn't have that, like Ed's got the Maple Ridge, so he has to run open frequency. So he gets everybody's radio traffic green, you know, long rappers, he hears that garbage all night long instead of just. Maple Ridge and Elpina Township, if he has the appropriate pager, he'll only hear what he needs to hear and he'll get his sleep like he's supposed to, you know. So that's the pager, the portable, total different beast, it's, it has all the abilities to talk to every other department. All the trucks can talk back and forth to it, that's, that's just a, that's a tool for us on the fire ground or responding, so. Cause we need to be able to let central dispatch know, we can't talk over the pager, they can only, we can only receive. So, does that clarify it?
Clear as it can be, it would be nice if there was a, a dual purpose. But you know what, you can't sell very many, uh, eight-hundred-band radios that you're gonna do a pager and combination. So we do have a motion and support in regards to the recommendation therein for two pagers. Uh, one mobile radio and one portable radio, uh, for three thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents, further discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Colavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crowe.
Yes.
Trustee Ryaner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, next item of business is the, uh, estimate for E three, uh, to make, uh, M dot certifications.
Okay, uh, originally, I think it was about a year ago, October. I had talked to the board and we had talked about possibly doing a, uh, oh, we didn't possibly. We, uh, actually put up engine three for asset disposal. Because it was gonna be my understanding that with our equipment village money, that we were gonna be proceeding relatively soon with a backup pumper tanker. Replacing our nineteen eighty-nine, uh, bumper, our tanker out there, um, obviously we're. Hmm, a couple of years into my reign here and I don't know if we've gotten any further. I know that, uh, uh, we've, the truck committees and the fire committees have met, I know that the, uh, turn, we turned over some. Uh, information for supervisor Skibby to look at, started writing RFP for the department. Cause he has a better knowledge and understanding of writing RFPs and probably can make it, uh, so somebody can understand it. I don't know where we're at with that process, but in the meantime, uh, we have engine three as our backup pumper. Uh, which the tanker never could be a backup pumper, cause it doesn't have the qualified pumping mechanisms on there to make that. Now, uh, several years ago, um, the department did our ISO rating. Uh, and that was an integral part, the engine three was an integral part of the ISO rating. So at our fire committee meeting and our truck committee meeting with the fire department, uh, we brought that up to vote, uh. With the truck committee and the committee has decided that the engine three is a very, uh, worthy piece of equipment to keep. Until we get an opportunity to purchase the popper pumper tanker, uh, and it's, so we need to get that vehicle. I had decided not to have that DOT certified, thinking I could save some money, uh. Supervisor Skivian myself had talked about that, he said if we're going to be using that vehicle, we need to get it certified. So therefore, my request is, is that we get it certified and, uh, go through the process of, uh, doing that. This, the, that's right from lube oil filter all the way up to, uh, the inspection itself and pump testing. And that's, uh, is a total of. Two thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars, ninety-five cents to be taken out of vehicle maintenance, two oh five, three, three, six, nine, three, eight, zero, zero, zero.
We have a recommendation on the table from chief Hanson, uh, to move forward with the state DOT inspection with R and R. For a total of two thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents, is there a motion to that effect?
Oh, thanks, the motion.
I have a motion on the table, is there support or it's been moved and supported for the discussion?
I have a couple of questions, first, we just wrote on here engine three, which I need to be more specific in my minutes.
Okay, engine three, Pierce, uh, is the manufacturer. I'll give you the VIN and all the stuff tomorrow.
I, I just need at least a year and I'm just. Thank you. Okay, my other question is.
Nine, eight.
I've heard us talk about fire committee and truck committee. Are, are they, are we using those interchangeably, are they the same thing? They're two different things.
Two different things.
I was not aware of a.
So.
Truck committee, I just.
In the fire department, in the fire department, rather than me just deciding what we're gonna go to the personnel committee about, or the, uh, fire committee about a truck. I want their input, the staff is the ones that use this, uh, are gonna be using this truck and so I. We have a committee established, uh, we've got Tim Muggie, Matt Clemcheck, Luke Meiser, uh. Myself, whom I missing, uh, Scott and Markham.
Okay, my other question is, this is the total needed to get it. Certified to go.
Right, yep.
It's not just to look for more problems with it and give us another estimate that's gonna be twenty thousand.
When they're, when they're doing the DOT inspection, if there's something that does come up, we don't know about, I mean, we'd obviously have to address it. But as far as we know, the estimate that he has given us to do this service is this at this point in time. And I think it's a worthy piece of equipment to, to save.
Trustee Ryan.
Well, Michelle raised half the question I had, and the other half is, then if that committee reports to the. Fire committee, why didn't this not come through fire committee with a recommendation or a near, a near any?
Well, one of the things we, uh, I don't, we, I don't think we discussed that, no, as far as the. You know, going back to Shell's. Uh, question. I don't know near enough about a fire truck as these guys do, so I didn't wanna be part of. Knowing whether or not we needed a, you know, four tires or eight tires or two fenders or inner fenders. Because the other fire truck that we bought, as we all may recall, uh, uh, we approved it only to find out that there were. Several options, uh, that, that, uh, were neglected, that, that somebody missed. And so that's why we have fire truck committee.
It's an employee-based committee, so that.
The, the people that use the equipment, they know what they need, I don't know what they need. Uh, as far as the other one is concerned, I don't know that we talked about it, but I think the reason why we're probably bringing this forward is because of lag times. And so, and so if we need it to help our I- ISO ratings, we better maintain it.
Well, and then as I've mentioned, uh, trustee Lappin is, uh, we can talk about ISO ratings, but maybe it's time we're quoting. Uh, uh, an ISO rating from several years back, maybe it's time that we actually look at that and actually have somebody from ISO. Actually presented this board of what their findings are, um, I think that'd be an extremely valuable asset. Um, and to that, um, we're all human, uh, as, as trustee Lappin mentioned. Um, it is good to put the onus back on the people that use the equipment, but even when you have industry professionals and, and great leadership. We forgot several things on our newest engine, um, so it's always an imperfect scenario, but you would know a lot more than anybody on this board. Um, but when you're looking at an apparatus with that many moving parts, sometimes things get overloaded.
And I, I would certainly entertain that, I do have a copy of the ISO rating and I know you do as well, supervisor Skibby. We could certainly bring that up as a topic of conversation at a fire committee meeting and get to the bottom of that, I'm sure, real easily.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be an insurance-based aspect, so, yes, trustee Ryan.
Well, my concern is that chief and the reference that, uh. Haven't been able to buy the pumper truck, I guess that, uh, out of the equipment village. But I assumed that all these things we're doing, including this, is out of the equipment, they should pay for.
This is vehicle maintenance.
It's gotta be for equipment.
Yeah.
Okay, well, you know, my point is that if we keep spending the money. Maybe it's not a point, but, but, uh, my concern is if we keep spending money on things. That are old and need repair and may need more repair, as Michelle was concerned about, uh, then, you know. Can we even?
And maybe the case.
Do that.
But in this instance, the reason that we're getting state certification is before it was state certified, we brought this into active service. And so we had to have a corrective action, it was pulled out of active duty. But it ran active scene command. And so we need to at least have at a bare minimum state certification for any of our resources before they leave the barn to be on site.
It, it actually ended up at a water point, providing water for incoming trucks, but yes, even, even that being said, that. That is the case and we need to, uh, and it's, it's a very vital piece of equipment to our fleet and we need to get it legalized.
Agreed, so we have, uh, a corrective action, a first step and see what comes out of, uh, the motion. So we have a motion and support to move forward with a quote from R and R. Uh, any further conversation about E three, which is also the Pierce nineteen ninety-eight, uh, fire.
Is that the green one?
It is the sharpshoes. The sharpshoes bomb.
Okay.
Yes, so we, uh, roll call.
Clerk Colavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crowe.
Yes.
Trustee Ryaner.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, next item of business is the fire department cell station garage door project, well.
Okay, uh. Earlier this spring, winter, March fourteenth or fifteenth, something like that. Uh, trustee Lappin had sent me, uh, legacy foundation grant application. Uh, we filled that out, we were a lucky recipients of two thousand dollars towards our garage door project, uh, at the cell station. We did a temporary fix on it, uh, temporary fix was bonding the holes in the door. We did a temporary fix on it, uh, temporary fix was bonding the holes in the door. They're already starting to rust out, uh. Even though it was temporary, uh, but with that being said, we had a little bit of, we have a little bit of money left from donations. Uh, we also have a couple of thousand dollars from the grant and I had budgeted in my main line items for the, this cup, this coming year. Uh, to replace those two doors. Based on the first original estimate I had received, well, I've gotten two others that were lower than that, uh, first original estimate. And I'd like to proceed, as you'll see, they're included here as well, uh. And I would like to proceed with that project to get that station completed with the two commercial doors. Uh, for a total of six thousand six twenty nine ninety, uh, out of GL two oh five, three, three, six, nine, three, one, zero, 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 maintenance and repairability.
So I'm a little confused. The, the sixty six, seven, twenty nine ninety is the bid from. Austin, where, where's the grant money and the, and the donation money?
So that's already been, uh, just part of the budget adjustments put into the, the building maintenance.
Oh, okay, I got you. All right, fair enough.
I wasn't sure on that process and Supervisor Skibby walked me through that, how to do that.
All right, that's fine. I, that clarifies that. I'll make a motion that we move forward with, uh. Uh, the request from the chief. Uh, to. Purchase the Austin hardware and building supply doors for the total of sixty six twenty nine ninety.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Further discussion?
I have. So I don't know if we care about this, but we have two bids from. Companies, businesses, local businesses that are in, is that yours or mine? Uh, local, because this, sounds like a Corvette to me, um, but. Oh, it's a Lincoln, it's me.
You went from a cellphone to a car alarm. I'm not.
Yeah, uh, don't give me that, uh. Anyway, we have two of the vendors that. Aren't suggested as the bid recipients within our township. Should that be a factor here? Uh, one of them is only a hundred and fifty dollars more.
Uh, we've always historically given preferential, um, purchasing to local vendors. Um, the recommendation is the, the lowest. I believe that's probably why that was the recommendation.
Move until it was.
That's gonna say if they know it's.
I, I don't.
We can take a break if you want to get rid of the.
I don't have any preference. Uh, it's up to this board. I. Always was under the understanding that you went for low bid, but I'm okay with, uh, doing with the township business for sure. Why wouldn't you support your own?
Well. I, I understand that, but I mean, I feel like Austin and Harris fellow.
Well, we have, we have a northeast. They just rolling like tall, the parents, that's the mean building.
But I just feel like. They're pretty darn local. I mean, I don't know.
Then you can make a motion.
I will make a motion. We, um. Well, right, garage door project, we have a motion on the table by trusty. Oh, yeah.
Your motion.
I don't, yeah, I mean, that's perfectly fine by.
So who do we wanna?
Uh, I do notice, I guess, that the, uh. The sixty. I just didn't, I just noticed that the recommended motion. Is through northeastern window and door at sixty seven, seventy, seven, sixty two.
Right, not. But in the upper part of the.
Yeah, no, that's the first part that I read.
Right, yeah, they're not matching, right.
So it's about a hundred and thirty dollars.
Yeah, but there's actually. I, the last two lines, you told me to cross out because it was from a form.
So prior to the board meeting.
But this recommendation.
I was guilty of a copy paste.
Recommendations in it.
That's just a hot now.
I did get a little confused by your recommended motion.
I apologize, that is definitely my copy and paste there.
Motion maker, or is your motion for the local business of northeast or to the top third? Above the previous two partial recommendations to go with.
Well, my motion was, my motion was, as the sixty six twenty nine would have been Austin. Yes, hardware and building supplies, so let's see how that floats.
So do you want to do? You want to leave it? Okay, so we want to, you want to leave it with Austin eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, further discussion? Roll call.
Treasurer Ellery Summers. Yes. Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
No.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
No, to keep it local, but yes, we need the doors. I would say, yes.
You can't give me, I guess, no.
Well, can, that's called life.
And I'll apologize for the hot mess at the bottom of mine.
I didn't know if that was over.
Yeah, I saw the top part. I didn't realize that below were two other partial recommendations.
Nor.
But yes, moving forward, it is not, does this. The satisfactory state, uh, bid, a process of lowest bid period, uh, we do give preferential treatment to township business.
Do we have a percentage preference?
We don't have it very similar to plus or minus three percent.
Right, right.
We got a policy, we send that to Paul.
You can send that to policy and procedures.
Policy procedures come up with something that if it's. If they're in a stone throw away, they fit.
Yep.
I'll change that. You can throw a stone and.
Okay, uh, moving forward, uh.
No, I mean.
So.
Okay.
Yeah, have we figured that?
Yep, we're good.
Wonderful. Um, moving forward would be the fire department response vehicle, uh, discussion. This was brought forward. Uh, I believe, was that the last meeting by trustee Foley, um, in regards to it, um. This is an ongoing discussion, um. And so I guess I looked at the board of recommendation of best practice moving forward.
I, I can give my thoughts on the subject. Um, I feel we need to save as much money as possible. I feel like the two thousand five Chevy Blazer. Is not cost effective to drive. So I would suggest that we return it to the state. And drive the twenty twenty. F one fifty around town and park it at night at cell side station. And take it off the fixed asset disposal list and keep it.
So I would tend to agree with you. I don't know why we would get rid of that piece of equipment after we've invested the time, money. No matter what, we're gonna find a use for it, um. I don't think we should give it back and, or put it on the asset disposal, I think we should utilize it. Yeah. And that was a discussion that we had had a couple of months ago, and I think that, well, uh, from the fire committee meeting, I think I brought forward that the idea that. The, um, that unit would be used for township, uh. Uses fire department, whatever, and that, uh, and that it would not leave the township, except if it was going on a. On some.
A mutual aid.
Mutual aid or, or something like that, but not for daily use.
Are you talking about the two thousand five in that comment? You just said, no, the twenty twenty you're talking about, okay, the twenty, okay.
And so, and I was at that meeting and that's what, exactly what trustee Lappin brought forward, um, and I was, so. Is that your understanding at this point?
Well, first off, let me. Okay. When I first started here, I just want to put some clarification into the room. We, you and I, Supervisor Skibby, we got in a vehicle and we drove, we rented a vehicle and drove to Lansing to look at a vehicle, then on to Gaylord. Because it was agreed upon that we would have a chief's vehicle. Now, there's been a lot of discussion over that and nobody seems to be all remember that conversation.
I can add clarification when you're done because you, this is a slippery slope of a conversation, Mark, and you know it as well as this board. My question was, that was an idea three months ago out of fire committee and you fought it vehement. So I'm asking you if you're of understanding that the motion that could be potentially made and its position.
So the way, well, clerk Plavich and I have talked about it, uh, other board members. Does it, I would park the vehicle at the cell site station at night. I would drive my personal vehicle and during the day, that would be my command vehicle. Uh, just. I want the board to understand that that vehicle needs to be available to, for staff to go to meetings and differently like that, of which we plan on use utilizing that for. Uh, if I have a meeting out in Green Township, I would certainly. Rather just go home instead of drive all the way back to the south side station. Uh, obviously that doesn't happen very often, but in the event the meeting takes me away from. The township rather than driving all the way back and then, and then trying to go back home again, we just. End the night there and then be back in the morning, but. The overall, uh, agreement that I'm willing to do is, is leave the vehicle at the cell side station. I would respond to work with my own personal vehicle. Now, uh, keeping in mind that, uh, I look at my workday from basically eight to four thirty or eight to five, right in that neighborhood. Uh, even though I'm salary, going home, uh, you know, and coming back another time, that's money out of my pocket. For the second trip, and I know we have a provision in my contract that allows for mileage. So if I have to come back for something that's not normal, day to day operations, I'm going to utilize the mileage.
Okay, I have a comment, so just for clarification and mileage. So the township does not pay mileage for you to drive from your house to work.
No, if you're, if I'm coming back in a second time.
We're not paying you mileage from your house to go to wherever.
Then I probably won't be coming back.
I mean.
Not like if you, I mean. I'd also like to make a sort of, I guess, an observation. Let me take your green township meeting as an example. Chances are you're gonna know that, well, in two or three weeks in advance, or at least a week in advance. So I, I, it seems to me that, that, that can be easily overcome. As far as, uh, going to a, I don't know, fire meeting in Gaylord or something like that, uh, that's understandable. Uh, so we would have a choice at that point, if this township board wants to pay mileage for personal vehicles, or if we want to just use a, a township vehicle. Uh, well, uh, those are things that we can hammer out at, at, at this level, but I, I don't think they should be determined. You know, at, at a spur of the moment sort of thing, um, we should have a procedure for those sorts of things.
Well, then it is from your workplace. So you'd be leaving from here because here's where you go to work. If you go from here to green. And back to, yeah, that's how we pay mileage for the banks. Right, and all, yeah, right.
But it wouldn't be from here to green, from green to wherever the person lives, that, that, that ends at green township.
And that, in that scenario.
In that, in that scenario, yeah, okay. That, that, that's, uh, pretty liberal.
And so I guess I want to clarify. Let's say you go, it's a board meeting night and you go home at two o'clock. You're not coming back in for the board meeting, is what you're saying.
No, I'd never leave once a board meeting.
Right, but if.
I was here.
If you had to, for whatever reason.
I would.
You didn't make a comment that you, I mean.
What I'm saying is. I leave at the end of the day, I park the vehicle at the south side and I'm heading home. I've done my. Eight or ten or twelve hours, whatever it is in the day. At three o'clock in the morning, I get called to come in for a structured fire. And I, and I come. First off, I don't have any vehicle with my, all my, uh, supplies in it, which. Deputy Croll would be able to tell you that that's gonna be very inconvenient of, especially where location of the fire. So not having a command vehicle is gonna take me longer to get to my stuff. Uh, but now I'm driving an extra time into, uh, into the office. When I wouldn't have to ordinarily, if I had a command vehicle, it would be a mute point.
But then once you got to south side, say a call came in, you, you drive from your house to south side. And then from there to the fires, when you'd get your mileage. No, so, because he'd be picking up the twenty twenty at south side. That's what I meant, from, from there. So he wouldn't get mileage because he's. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm gonna ask you what's reasonable if I come in on a salary day that I'm not getting any overtime for, all right?
We're all, we're all set.
We're all salary, there's not salary days and non-salary days.
That's a mentality that doesn't know justice for anybody's position. We're all salary. So by saying that your salary period is between eight and four thirty is, you know it as well as anybody here, that's a farce. Your job could be thirteen hours a day. It couldn't start. So it's not based on salary has and never will be based upon forty hour weeks. It's past completing said task, um, and however many hours that that takes.
Could, could I ask the chief a question?
Yes, my own answer.
Do, do you respond to, uh, mutual aid fires in other jurisdictions?
Come here at home.
If it's requested.
Well, why would you need to if they have, if they're. Their incident commander.
If they request our department, we come because we can.
Your department comes, but what would you need?
Because I can run several different things on that fire safety officer or whatever, that's other chiefs come to our fires. Water supply officer, whatever it is. Interior attack command, uh. Maybe we can pose a rip team for somebody. You need more overhead, but one guy can't run a structured fire.
I know that, that's been my point in other conversations.
So we have, the discussion is as, as it currently stands, is that. The, there is no motion at this point. Uh, the, the discussion is leaning towards disposing of the two thousand five, uh, returning that back to the Gaylord MDNR fire office. Uh, completing our lease of set. Equipment. And then the twenty twenty four.
I'd like to make. Separate motions, and I'll make the first motion that you just mentioned.
Okay, so separate motion, so, uh, to the first half, is there?
Not a half, it's a separate motion.
Separate motion, so is there a motion? Would you please make?
Motion would be to dispose of the.
Two thousand five Chevy Trailblazer.
Okay, dispose of the return to the state.
Correct, so we have a motion on the table to return the two thousand five to the Gaylord Field Garage. Is there support to that motion?
I'll support that. I have a discussion afterwards.
Yeah, we have support. Further discussion?
Any, is there any e- equipment in the two thousand five? That we've placed in the two thousand five that we need to take out of the two thousand five? Okay, so then I guess you probably want to amend your motion to, uh, return the.
As, as it was.
Originally was presented.
As it was originally.
That, that isn't gonna happen just over, right? It's gonna take a couple of days, few days to do that.
Yes, Michelle.
I don't think there's separate issues. I, I think.
I do. I made the motion, so.
Yeah.
Yes, Lauren.
Um. I would just like to suggest that, um. Maybe the fire committee discussed. What we would use this two thousand five for if we kept it. I mean, what, what are the pros and cons of getting rid of it and keeping it? I mean, I think maybe, maybe further thought needs to go into that from the fire.
But they already, I thought Steve already said they.
Or did you, or?
The fact of the matter is the two thousand five will begin to cost us more money than it is worth it to keep it.
Okay, so basically you've had the conversation and it's.
Talked about, and I guess Russ wants to break this into two motions, uh, at least I'm assuming he does. To, to, to take the two thousand five. And really, I guess, not put it on the disposal list, but just return it with, is, is as close to original as we've received it. And then from the fire committee stamp meeting, when I, from a few months ago. Uh, the idea of taking the two thousand and twenty, uh, vehicle. Keeping it within our fleet, but using it strictly for township related business, uh, to typically fire related business.
Yep, that was that conversation that it, to be honest, it failed miserably at a state, but here we are two, two months downstream. And that's why I want to make sure that, um. Everybody's on the same page moving forward, right? So that's, that's it. But that being said, we do have a motion and su- uh, support in regards to the two thousand five Chevy Trailblazer. And returning it as originally, uh, taken on lease from MDNR to be returned and it's. Soon as capacity, I guess, as soon as possible. Is there any other discussion to the motion on the table? Saying, uh, roll call.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers. Yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. So, Michelle.
I guess I would like to ma- make a motion to take the Ford F one fifty off the fixed at asset disposal list. But its use only be within the township. I don't know.
Like our policy and procedures have within county, otherwise, uh, directed to an auto or a mutual aid request. Was what would draw us potentially, but even then, we're not gonna be getting out.
It's really gonna have to be for fire department business within our service area.
We're, we're gonna.
Only you.
So I want a clarification as to how you're drafting this motion.
Yeah.
Don't have to remove it from the fixed disposal asset list. You can stay.
Why wouldn't we? Why would we leave it on there?
Yeah.
I think we need to. But I would like to take it off the fix.
No, what happens in the event he has to go to a training and.
Then he goes, then we, we sit down and define those procedures moving forward.
And within the county does cover if you have a meeting in Green or Wellington.
I just want to point out, it needs to be a command vehicle for the chief for day-to-day. While we're in the township here, and some of our duties do take us to press skill for mutual aid, some are, you know. We could end up in Hill.
Fire business, that's for fire business, and so.
I guess what we're saying is driving at home to and from work is not fire business. I don't think any of us would define that as fire business.
You're, you're drafting the motion. So when you're done, would you?
This is what I have so far, um. To re- the twenty twenty-four F-one fifty to remove it from the fixed asset disposal list and only use for fire business.
I think that's a very, very broad, but if you're comfortable with it. So we are, that is true, but it stays.
Well, then I.
And the conversation is right now.
Yeah, so I mean, if, if we talking, this is just, can we, you wanna make the motion that we tweak the thing?
Yes, and then we can, so I made the motion, this is my motion so far, I do not have support for it.
So will you read, please just read it in its entirety?
To remove the twenty twenty-four F-one fifty off the fixed asset disposal list and to only use for fire business.
Is there support to that?
I'll support it.
Then moved and supported, further discussion?
Could it be to include within Alpena County, auto or mutual aid and fire business, like as example?
Well, I think that the idea of fire-related business sort of sums that up, because a fire-related business would include mutual aid. The mutual aid could happen at any time and in any place within a reasonable distance. And so, I, I really think what we're trying to do here is limit its use so that we're not. Racking up the miles and dealing with.
Still be used if there is a fire meeting in Gaylord.
Yeah, exactly, if it's fire-related business, great, but if it's just traveling to and from your home, no, that, that isn't the intent of. Township-owned properties, uh, vehicles.
So do we want to amend to include the phrase not to be used?
I think it's.
And I would, I would strongly, because we, 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 it don't, I wouldn't suggest that or assume that it is combined. I honestly, if, if we don't make the motion as succinct as possible, and not, and fire business is. I agree, it covers ninety percent, but.
Well, I, I mean.
Yes, sir.
I would comment that I don't think that truck would be needed, or any of our three trucks, three trucks. Would be needed if we got called to the U P to help fight a forest fire, they'd want some of our firefighting equipment, not that equipment. So I don't see how mutual aid would ever take us out of the county for that, with that vehicle. And, uh, you know, statewide or broader than the county.
Those, but those potentials, I think, would then fall into the, the, the topic of conversation that we've, are gonna give potential future consideration to. Is joining the Mavis, uh, system, where that would have the potential of hauling all state resources in regards to.
I was just gonna make. Certainly possible, and it could certainly be possible that somebody could go down Elton account, on a, on a structured fire.
Sure.
So that's included in this.
Because that would be included under.
So we have a motion on the table, and we have support. Well, last time that I'll ask you to read it, just so that everybody before we go to vote knows what they're voting about.
To remove the twenty twenty-four F-one fifty off the fixed asset disposal list and only use for fire-related business. Not to be used from, for driving from home to work.
Move to table this motion until the next meeting.
Uh, we.
There's already a motion and a support.
Parliamentary procedure, he has the ability to make a motion overriding to postpone, uh, to the subsequent meeting.
Yes, sir.
So we have to vote on that, though.
That would set precedent, so when we have a motion on the table to, uh, postpone, uh, discussion of the fire department response vehicle. Discussion, uh, and precursory motion, uh, do you want me to?
No, I'm just trying to keep track of what motions were made and changed.
So, you had your motion.
There's no support.
Um, right now, there is a motion on the table, is there any support? Seeing no support, the motion dies on the table, going back to the subsequent motion, uh, that still exists in regards to. The twenty twenty-four F-one fifty off, taking it off the fixed asset disposal list and only using for fire business relating, related to.
No, related to something.
Business not to be used, uh, for driving to and fro from home to work. Is the motion and the support still live on the table?
I still make that motion.
Yes.
And there's still support, uh, further discussion, yes, sir.
We have three pickups now equipped for. Whatever, when we bought that twenty twenty. It was a used vehicle, not set up to be an emergency vehicle, it's just a standard pickup truck, the, of the. Wiring and all the other things that go with the other two we bought. Um, and it was because there was a delay in receiving that, and it was said at the time, well, why would we want to do this and still buy two more? And as you recall, when we were discussing whether to buy two or just one. From that podium, it was said, well, when and if we get that, those two twenty twenty-three vehicles. Then we can sell this, so why do we need in this department three pickup trucks fully equipped for emergency, uh, services? Uh, of mostly of first responder services, that's what they were intended for. Uh, we never at that time discussed a chief's vehicle to be used for, uh, especially one of these three. So, uh, that's my criteria here, that's my, um, the basis for. Being opposed to this motion, at this time, I think it's unfair that Mr. Polley, who proposed this originally, isn't here to vote on.
Um, it was my understanding, um, that when it was said that. You know, we could sell it, that that was an option, that, not that once we got them, we were gonna sell them, but that wasn't a decision. Um, but I also remember hearing that this, the two thousand and twenty could be used to haul a trailer if need be. It could be used to haul, um, hoes or whatever else, I mean, that is needed, um, for a fire, so. That's kind of where I'm at with.
Recent statements about.
But still, if it could be.
Currently, people are using their personal vehicles to haul this hose, which is. Can cause damage to their vehicles.
Ellery Summers, you're absolutely correct, that was the discussions that we had at the fire committee meetings.
Yeah, so, and well, the, there were colorful conversations, but we do have a motion on the table. And barring any other further discussion, I'll take this to a vote so that we can continue forward. Uh, seeing no further conversation and discussion on this, uh, motion, uh, roll call, please.
Trustee Reiner.
No.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Blavich, yes, Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. So moving forward, um. New business item eleven, um, the late edition, I do apologize, but before you. Um, uh, there is a memo to this body, uh, followed by two subsequent letters, both extremely generic, both. Oh, Pina County Administrator Hannah, uh, in one, and the second being to. City Manager Smolinski and Chief Edmonds in the second. Um, at this point, as you can read in this, let down these letters, is just to see and engage in conversation. Uh, I think, uh, at the county law, there is, uh, the upcoming mileage that the committees are already starting to work upon. Um, and I think that it would be in our best interest to make our impression felt within those committees. Um, so.
I would like, if we're, if we do get a motion, is I would like to vote on each of these letters separately.
I agree.
That's fine, so.
I feel like we need more time, um. Uh, uh, you, you can't rebuild something in a year's time or overnight. Um, are we behind the schedule? Probably yes, is there a lot of work to do? Yes. Um, but I'm not ready to give up at this point.
Um, and I, can I ask why you make the assumption that you're giving, this is, these, these are, these are topics that actually approached with chief of. Mechanics, there's so many other, this is, if you, I'm not even in the mindset of a contract per service. There are so many duplicities and costs and waste amongst emergency services as a whole, where if we actually started coordinating and purchasing together. Or utilizing similar things, we could actually.
So. I just feel that way, but I think, uh, it could be accomplished without a letter to another organization or entity.
Because we, it says right in the letter contracting.
I covered all the four Cs that were in the M T A magazine, I hope everybody at this table read it. We are deficient and there's no slam, we have awesome staff, but the reality is, we're. In the same national predicament as everybody, and so if we're not gonna have a realistic conversation, bringing in all topics and putting all items. On the table for discussion, it's not saying that we're set in stone in options A, B, or C, but we don't make and see what options are out there. And just say, well, we'll just give it another few years. That is.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, I don't, I don't think we're at that point, I'm not, I'm not at that point.
Okay.
I, I wanna, uh, I wanna break these into both letters.
Yeah.
Um, I would be in favor of the letter. To the county. You know, and I'll, 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 I'm gonna build off of your comment. That, one of the things that is sort of. I've never really been able to completely understand. How and why the ambulance mileage is directed the way it's directed. And so, I, I, I've, I've looked up. How much tax money? That the taxpayers of the Charter Township of Alpena pay into the ambulance mileage. And it works out, interestingly enough, uh, within a very small, uh, percentage. To be almost the exact same amount of the, as the fire mileage, so the ambulance mileage, the township. Uh, collects five hundred and sixty-three thousand nine hundred and two dollars and thirty-two cents for the ambulance mileage. And so, what I'm wondering, and I don't know that we've ever talked about this, other than getting a, a. Very small percentage of that money, coming back to the township about two point.
Thirty-six.
Or about two and a half percent or something like that, very, very small amount. And so, one of the things that's always troubled me about the earlier discussions that we had had with the city of Alpena. Was that the, 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 the cost that the, the city had wanted to impose upon us. And, and it seems to me as a taxpayer, in fact, then I pulled my own personal taxes, I pay. Oh, somewhere around three hundred dollars a year towards the, uh, ambulance mileage. But I don't understand why we're not going back to sit at that table and say. The monies that we provide, the ambulance mileage represents probably in that forty percent range. Of the full amount of monies that the, that the ambulance mileage collects, but yet we receive. Two point five percent of that money, i- it doesn't make any sense to me. And so if we are running, and while we, while you were reading that letter, I did a little math, um, from, um. And it, it looks like about eighty, consistently eighty-two to eighty-three percent. Of our total runs are medical-related, would you say that that would be fair? Okay, and so, um. But yet we're only receiving a remarkably small percentage of, of that funds, it seems to me. Notwithstanding things like grant monies for radios and those sorts of things, that we could probably determine what that dollar amount. Ends up being annually, why are we not going to that table and asking for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Uh, because I didn't want to go to any table without the board supporting, because we're talking about being open and transparent.
I think it's, I think that, that's fine, that's fine, so, so I personally. Given, given a parameter of discussion, would be, would be in favor of, uh, the township. I don't know who would sit at that table, uh, to, to at least air our concerns about equity. That if we're doing these things, we should get some level of compensation for that. And so, um, I would be, like I said, generally in favor of, of a letter going to the, to the county board of commissioners. Or to, um, the county administrator.
Do you want to break it into two parts? So we can just keep moving with business?
Yeah, so then the second letter, um. These are the supervisors' motions, correct, on the table and you.
These are my recommendations.
Not a motion, it's just.
There is, there was a suggestion by, uh, Clerk Blavich to break these letters apart, because I went, yeah. It is what it is.
I, I guess I'm, I guess I'm fine with that, I, I'll make the motion that, uh, that the Charter Township of Alpena. Submit correspondence specifically to the county of Alpena, uh, requesting a seat. Uh, at the negotiation table on the ambulance and emergency services committee.
I'll support that.
A motion and support to move forward with the letter of engagement, if you will, to Alpena County, any further discussion?
Is that the form of the letter as it stands right now? It, it could be that binary.
As presented, this letter as presented as well, okay.
So we have a motion on the table, uh.
Yes.
Further discussion? If not, all those in favor are due on to a roll call, because might as well do a roll call.
Okay. Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Blavich, yes, Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes.
I'll make the motion as to the other letters. I, I wanted to break it in, my, my conversation was into two, then I was gonna talk about the second part.
So he is, trustee Reiner made a motion.
So we have a motion as to, and what is your motion?
The second letter to the city.
Yeah, so we have a motion on the table for the second letter.
To the city of.
To the city.
Do we have support?
Is there support? I'll support it. Can't know where you're going if you don't talk to all the players. So they're just, so we have a motion and support, trustee.
So speaking in support of the motion, you know, the major player is the city's, uh, service, and they've had the contract with the. County, and I think one of the possible discussion points is expanding. Uh, the service, uh, through, you, you possibly with the county's auspices or. Or through the city, and I know we have some angst with the city right now, and that's understood, and I have the same angst, but the point is that. Those economies of scale that we're missing, and there's a lot of different things, you mentioned a couple specifics. Uh, Mr. Supervisor, and there's, uh, you know, and I was just looking at the, at the fire, the department report here. And, for example, uh, talk about structure fires, but I think we have less than double digits in structure fires in our township. Almost always, and I noticed that we have, uh, a report on how many vehicle fires we have, how many. Grass fires or vegetation fires we have, but we don't have a report on how many structure fires we've had here today. Um, so, you know.
Um, so you know, the point for me is. Um, and, and it's the same thing. What I'd be interested in knowing, for example, folks. Is how often under the current county contract for medical services. What is the response time between when we arrive on average and when the city arrives behind us? What is the difference in that time? Because I know there's things that we can do immediately, but then. We're just a, a bump on the wall after the city arrives. So, uh, you know. But you know, the, the, I've had an emergency contact or a medical happening in our township in my neighborhood. And when I drove by. There was our, our vehicle there. And I came back a few minutes later from purchase and the city's vehicle was there with ours. And our two people were out at this road copy. So I don't know how often that happens, but I'd like to know the response times. I probably have to go to central dispatch.
But who knows what they were talking about? They could have been talking.
But my point is that, that right now. I mean, you talked Steve about many months, many months ago about, uh, option of working with all the other townships. We got no response from them. Um, and so, uh, you know, we need to see, because it's not just as, as, uh. Mark said a few minutes ago, I can't think of his last name, um, that, uh, we're dealing with a. Command, uh, uh, um, staffing problem, which we are. But we're also dealing with a financial problem. And we are funding this fire department always have. Significantly from the general fund, which isn't fair to our taxpayers. I keep harping on that and nobody seems to change their expression, but I understand. That yes, we are having trouble getting people. We're always gonna have trouble getting people because we don't have the money to pay them appropriately. And so. Uh, but if there's ways to save money by cooperating with another department in whatever way it might be. Then we have more money to pay them. And that's what I'm not trying to, at this point, I'm reconciled to the fact we're always gonna have our own department. Yes, well, let's figure out a way that we can save some costs.
What you're really talking about then is what's called a cooperative action group.
Well, and they may have.
Yeah.
But we're at this point in time. The, the intent was, you know, everybody wants open and transparent. I provided open and transparent. And being open and transparent to our taxpayers is looking at any and all options. Whether it's just mechanical, whether, whatever those. Could be purchasing PPE, could be a, a ton of different things.
Mr. Supervisor, you are our elected paid full-time representative of this board. And I don't want to gag you or, or, or whatever they call it, whether bridle you with something that you can't. You know, that, that you can't do. In other words, you know, you should have the right to come, talk to people on our behalf and come back with options for us. Nobody else is doing it.
That's my, my only intent with this is. Let's put everything on the table. What doesn't fit, we can pull off. But until we've checked those boxes, that was its only intent, wasn't to infuriate or aggravate. We are two years plus seven, five. And we're still having very similar conversation. I guess, uh, how do we anticipate? And I know that it's, it's, it's definitely a process therein. But you can't play a hand of poker without all the cards. And knowing what's what. So that was its sole intent. I brought it to the board. I've done my due diligence. And we have a, a motion and support just to send it. It may say that word, but I pulled that language out of the MTA magazine because those are the four Cs that are plaguing us. And so.
And I kinda tend to agree with Russ that, I mean, you are the figurehead, the mayor supervisor, however you wanna put it. So if you wanna go have conversations, I don't see why, um, we have to give you permission per se, right?
So, so this is why, uh, trustee Crawl, it's because it was an ask that if we are going to be honest and. Fact-based moving forward. That city council, while this, I don't know if it came from city council, but, uh, manager Smolinski asked that. She at least know that she can take this to the city council in good faith that we are open to having those conversations. Um, that was always the historic argument is, you know, uh, how many, how many smoky rooms? Did this come out of when the entire board, um, knew about it? But here we are. I'm trying to do the right thing for our taxpayer and that's talking about options. In any scale or scope. That, that is as simple as I'm gonna leave it. I don't know what those answers are. I guess this board can de- determine what conversations it's willing to have. But yes, I am bringing this forward as a recommendation by motion so that. We can engage in whatever those conversations make them out. That's, that's solely it. So. I think we've covered enough discussion unless anybody else has anything else to say. Um, and we'll call vote. There's no other.
Trustee Lappin.
No.
Clerk Palavich, no. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
No.
Trustee Crawl.
No.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Okay. Moving forward, uh, last one of new businesses, uh, policy and procedure, uh, Ben is Laura.
Um, we, clerk's office has been, um, working on, on getting photo identification badges. For all of our employees and we came up with a, uh, policy and procedure. Regarding the photo identification badges. And when they need to be worn and different replacement and that kind of thing. Um, and then also, uh, request form if somebody lost theirs or they had a change in their title or something. So. Um, but anyway, um, it has looked through. Um, clerk Palavich has reviewed it and so has the policy procedures committee. And once we implement this, then the clerk will, um, pass off the badges. To the employees.
The trustees have to.
No. Cause I know I'd be replacing them like.
Are you making that recommendation?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the photo identification badge policy procedure as well as the form as presented.
I'll support it.
Like an escutcheon.
And this is for all of our employees.
Paid on calls.
Paid on calls.
And, um.
What even got me thinking of it is because. There was a reason to call nine-one-one. A paid-on call came. My husband got to the door. Didn't have a clue that this person was emergency medical response and is like the, so. Identify ourselves.
This been supported?
Yes.
Um, and this would include F and B and, and.
We just need to get.
I'm, I'm in the field, so I have absolutely no problem with it. I mean.
I guess I can appreciate why we're, why we're, uh, wanting to, to look at this. I, I. I, uh. There was a section in here that talked about. Safety essentially, uh, and the first thing that I thought about was. If I'm at a structure fire or if I'm doing something.
I don't think they'll be wearing them under all their gear.
It sounds like they have to have it on a lanyard between the shoulder and their waist.
Well, that wouldn't be practical.
But I don't think they have a clip either. I don't think they even have them. I think maybe we need to clarify that some.
No, I, I, I can't imagine they could do that kind of stuff for, for obvious reasons. And so I'm, I'm wondering. Yeah, they gotta be made a Kevlar.
Is it a related to the podium?
Yep. Uh, so if our personnel is in uniform with a name tag on it, are they still required to have that, uh, name badge on?
If it's a medical run, this is, so this is, this point of clarification is to your point. Yeah, of course. You don't wanna turn up here because you don't wanna have melted plastic on your chest. That was an oversight and we'll make that recommendation for change. But that being said, that can be addressed by the motion itself. Now to medical calls. Yeah, that is site-specific, the exact same story, cause actually in this instance, it was Mr. Galloway. Without any identification and it was a medical call. So that, in that instance, I think is more than a legitimate reason.
Let me just, uh, point out a what if then. I'll use Lieutenant Waterson as an example. He's here with his uniform on. He's got his name badge on. He's pretty identifiable. So am I typically if I'm in a uniform. If Mr. Waterson puts his name tag on his. Uniform shirt for daily operations and now we're talking fall or winter and he throws his coat on over top and doesn't think anything about his name tag. Cause he's wearing his name tag. The name tag is pointless at that point.
I, I don't wanna look at this thing from a departmental standpoint. It, it, it's, it's not, it's not worth it looking at it like that. I, I'm assuming that this is an issue. Somewhere along the line that this was brought up because this is a problem.
I'm gonna show this to you.
Yeah. Thinking, how are our guys identifying themselves?
Well, I guess, I guess.
I can go buy a T-shirt.
Well.
But that's not always the case.
I don't wanna go there. Yeah, hold on.
It's silent.
Uh, um, I'm, I'm. On a day-to-day functionality within this building, do we not know who's? So this is specific to outside of this building, whether it be F and B.
Internal, we all wear.
Yeah, does, does, does. If he knocks on the door, he represents himself by it with.
And it would be.
I guess when I read this, I thought, geez, how much of a problem is this?
Greater than you would anticipate.
Yeah.
We also have people, if someone wants to give someone praise, they're like, I had great service here. They don't know who the person was, could they? But if they have a name tag or we, unfortunately, more often it's. Somebody did not give me good service.
I'm not opposed to this. I'm just wondering. Where the issues was. You, 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 you have, uh, delineated that. And so, um. I wish there, there, there needs to be something. Because as I read it, it was a lanyard between the shoulders and the waist. I didn't see the, the clip-on stuff or whatever it was.
On a clip or land.
Or on a clip or land.
Can I point out in, in number three, it does say the requirement may be temporarily waived at the department head's discretion when wearing the ID. Presents a safety issue, however.
So that's already.
Right. However, the employee must carry the ID at all times during work hours and when actively acting in an official capacity. It can be placed in a pocket or wallet.
Okay. So I, I can appreciate the professionalism wise of, of a, of somebody coming to a medical run and saying, hi, I am. I'm Steve Lapp and I'm with the charter township of Alpena. I'm, I'm here to help. I, I can appreciate those sorts of things, but I was concerned about the, uh, F, F and V jumping down into a, uh. Yeah, why am I, why? I can appreciate that and I can appreciate from a, from a first responding stand, uh, from a medical standpoint. And, and from a safety standpoint, if fires and those things are just, it's inappropriate to wear that sort of stuff and down.
There's a safety issue. Definitely don't wear it.
We will have the value. Somebody's got one on the land or they're doing patient care and things to anyone.
It can be a clip.
We have clips and.
One thing that we have to be mindful of is when we're discussing, uh, recommendations for policy and procedure. It is the overarching policy of the township, not departments.
And we, we just can't look at those things.
Yes. So.
But, but you know, just, just for clarification, my, my point of view, and maybe I was in the wrong back when I worked for the county, but, but we had those things. And I took the lanyard off and I took. Clip off and I put it in my wallet, cause I didn't like to wear it at a jury trial. But, um, the, uh, but the point is. That if somebody asks you for ID, then you've got something with your picture on it to give them.
Yeah.
And, and now I don't know if you guys take your wallets out of your pockets so your credit cards don't melt when you're at a fire, but it's, it's so, just keep. What?
We're not required to carry a wallet.
Whether you do or not, I don't know. Uh, you know, cause I don't know what your protective gear, how much that protects, but the point is this. If, you know, you're surely not driving anywhere without your wallet and your driver's license. So just put it wherever that is.
Again, I, I, I don't think this is confrontational. This is, we're not, we're not picking on any, anyone particular department or anything like that. You're just trying to look at the. The professionalism. I think that's really what you're ultimately trying.
And when customers come in, oh, you work here?
Yes.
You show up with a fire truck, they're probably gonna be okay.
Yeah, they're gonna know that.
That being said, I mean, I think that the, the purpose of this recommendation is, is, is valid and has been noted. Uh, amongst the discussion of this board and if there's no other further discussion, uh, let's take this to, uh, vote please.
Clerk Palavich. Yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. So that includes. Uh, concludes our new business. Uh, this takes us to the second opportunity for public comment. If there's any public comment, uh. Please stand at the podium, state your name.
Mark Johnson again. Um, I, I feel. It necessary to kind of correct what I saw with three significant misunderstandings by the board in the discussion. Um, although I thought it was a good discussion and, and I agree with, um. Trustee Lappin about the money that's being given to. Essentially the city. For EMS services. That we could bring into this community to help defray our fire department costs. That's a fight with the city, cause anything going into our pockets comes out of the city's pocket.
So I, I'd ask, are you representing yourself as a citizen or a?
I, I am a citizen. I am a citizen.
Yeah, got it. Thank you.
Um. First off. The. You spoke, um, supervisor about the duplicity of. Equipment, among other things. And this area, again, I don't look at it as individual departments. It's an area and resources that are very, very. Available to all, all the time. We're terribly short on ladder trucks. We're short on, um, tankers. And incredibly short on people. And, and no matter how you rearrange those things. Who works for who or any of that, paid-on call career, whatever, we still have a tremendous shortage of people. And I wanted to. To be assured that maybe there's something in vehicle maintenance or other things that you mentioned. But certainly not in, in the major things that we need to do our business in the streets. Secondly, was, was Commissioner Reinhardt's discussion about the value of the first responders out here. The city. Is seven minutes further south than the north side station and eight minutes further north than the south side station, if I said that right. Um, and that seven or eight minute difference in response. That the city would provide out of headquarters is literally life and death when you have four to six minutes when your heart's not beating. So tha- that's an absolutely critical thing. And I would argue that the present EMS system is very good. I'm happy to live here. It's better than where I came from. It's a very good system. I think we could use some of that money to support the fire service. Um, i- in terms of saving money. I'm not sure where we save money when we're short of people and we're short of equipment. Every single issue of capital equipment that the fire department has is at the end of its life. And it hasn't been replaced on a regular basis. So you've been living, because as I look at the budget numbers and, and discuss them with my wife, the fire department is living on fifty-five percent. Of the effective money it had five years ago, between literal cuts and inflation. And to run the same business and we're not running, that they are not running the same business they were running five years ago. Um, but, but they're doing it on fifty-five percent of the money and the only way that's happening is by eating into turnout codes. Eating into SCBA, eating into other things that need to be replaced on a regular basis. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Johnson.
Matt, I'm Jack. Um, I guess I was kinda surprised when you guys started thinking about another letter to the city again, seeing what they have the options. I guess the biggest part is because we still haven't solved the water issue yet. So why would we jump in bed with city again and that's not solved?
Chad Ash, um, two comments, um, just as Matt said. You guys cannot figure out a water authority or a water problem. We've got fourteen years, I think, of lawsuits and how many millions of dollars? Ten years?
Unfortunately.
Ten years and. Ten years and we're proud of it, that's ridiculous, we've got to settle the water problem before you get into any other bed. You have to get out of the one you're in. Second, you guys don't have a clue what the chief is doing on when he's at a scene. If he needs to go to South Side Station, no room to place that truck inside the station, I believe, that station is already tight. Three o'clock in the morning, we've got a structure fire. Let's say it's out on Worth Road. He's gotta warm that truck up, thaw it, get to the scene and then take command of a fire. You're talking life and death for these guys that are working, you guys have no idea the importance of him to be able to respond instantly. Whether he's living in this township or outside, you hired him knowing where he lived. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Yeah, Muggie. I've been with this fire department probably twenty eight years and I've seen I've seen a lot of things come and go. What I'm hearing here tonight seems to be a lot of petty things going on. Nah, the. Number one, the wages, the way we do our time card. The redundancy in doing this time card is ridiculous. There's four steps. They get done at that day and you know that. We have an S drive that's on our computer down at South Side. We can go to the bottom line and take everybody's number. It's done, simple as that. Tell me any different.
Well, you shouldn't be doing, there's there's a process to time and I I apologize, but this is such an egregious error of statement. That. You have to understand that as a grown man, since I've been fourteen, I filled out my own time card. And when I see our clerk's department and our chief combating. And trying to figure things out and our only corrective action is to take the master sheet. And if you don't fill your stuff out, you go right to the source of it, there's no checks and balances. The system needs to be. Looked at and discovered and properly fixed, cause what is happening and if it leads to the coin term of past practice. Ninety eight percent of the time I hear the term past practice, it's never worked. So to your comments, sir, I love you and you do serve a great, you're you've been here twenty eight years, dedicated. But time cards are such a low piece of hanging fruit, I would have never have thought, one of the items that was on the policy and procedure manual. Was a disgrace to this entire township and it was a clarification point to how to fill out a time sheet. I wish we didn't even have to have that conversation, sir. But I'm not gonna allow misinformation to continue. Because this clerk and that chief, how many times on payday? Are they chasing their tails trying to find grown men and women to turn in a time slip? Well, every pay period.
That's my point, it's right there on the computer, it's right, the whole thing's right in front of you, the sheet, everything's right there in front of you. And along with that.
And it's not always.
Go down there on a Sunday night. And make out that time sheet, on my Sundays, I would like to relax that evening, but you know what? Seven, eight o'clock on Sunday nights, I'm going down to that fire department, making out that time sheet, making a special trip.
I I I don't know another world that if you don't fill out a time sheet, you don't get paid.
There again, it's on the bottom line of that S drive.
Which is the supposed.
So we're not gonna beat that up anymore, to to the point of the tanker situation. I've been on four, I believe, four specs of getting tankers, we go to get this tanker. We get the allocation for the money, we finally find the unit. And especially the last one, within forty eight hours, our committee met to finalize that. The finalize went to you, I believe.
Yeah, and I'll respond.
And and where where are we at from several weeks ago now?
That was turned in two weeks ago with the the list of qualifications as to what it would take for an RFP. My question to you is, why am I drafting an RFP for this department? I'm doing it because I'm, I said that I would.
Exactly.
That is a process, now let me get back to your previous statement. Four spec outs, then let's go back to our policy and procedures, because unfortunately, anything over twenty thousand dollars of a purchase. Must go through an RFP process, so you technically went through one procedure four times. That was never supposed to be allowed. But both you can't, because we've seen all the the breakouts from dealerships and I've heard it at the fire committee meeting. Well, why would we make a dealer actually put together another quote? Heard that verbatim. Cause that's their job, they're selling equipment.
The problem.
And our policy is anything over twenty thousand dollars has to take that route.
Understandable, understandable.
We've done it four times the wrong way and now because I've had this RFP, only data that I have are this site specifications. Which you guys are best to put together, you use it, you should put it together. You know the process to an RFP, cause it's not just a template form.
The trouble is with these this equipment and you know this, it's time sensitive. We have sixty days and then the unit's gone, we start all over again.
Well, no, you actually start the right way, that's I guess where I'm going is.
So.
Together the RFP and actually follow the proper format, because. I. We're talking about policies that are for the entire township, but all I continue to hear is how it only affects. Just the fire department and why is this isn't site specific to fire department, we have as a board. Numerous departments unbeknownst, but we have numerous departments outside the fire department and everybody has to play in a linear fashion. So to that, have I had the opportunity to put together the RFP tanker that I got the data from Chief Hanson late two weeks ago?
Uh.
Or or right before you went to Alaska?
I was gone for two weeks.
So.
It's been. Yeah, well, four weeks. Been about four weeks, yeah.
Yeah.
But what also brought that up is because of the, they gave you put the implemented engine three back into.
It was.
Put that back into service, that was one of the ideas is not having to spend that money, put that back in service. Because we were gonna have this new tanker to supplement that situation.
You've been here for twenty eight years and you understand that even when you follow the proper protocol, it doesn't happen in thirty sixty days.
But then then we lose out on equipment.
Then how will we format it in the best, most appropriate way? And that is actually following the policy that guides this entire township. Not just the fire department, the entire township. If there would be a recommendation to change the RFP policy with a lower threshold of twenty thousand dollars, throw it our way. But when we as a board bring forth a policy for the entire township. It's not up to a department to decide whether or not they choose to follow the policies. And you know that I understand. We need that tanker, yeah.
Very bad, very.
Why then did we go through that process with those businesses to the point where three, four times? To the point where the conversation at the last fire meeting was. This is what we need, this is what we want and we're not gonna make these these salespeople do their job again. You were there.
Yeah, I I guess what I would like to add to that committee meeting was that I thought the meeting was a great meeting, first of all. And I I thought that we were all on exactly the same page uh at that meeting. Uh it it seemed to me that it was pretty clear that the fire committee uh was. Better served at the ten thousand foot level uh in terms of putting together uh. All of this bid specs and so on, that was much, much better placed in the fire truck committee. Hands, because you guys operate those trucks, you know what you need, uh and 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 you could place. That list together.
Right.
As I recall, the uh fire committee meeting was, the discussion was just get us. The cause Chief Hanson had said, I you know, I don't know how to write an RFP and I'm like. Understandable, uh all we need to do is just plug in a couple of normal templated stuff like, you know. The date that it's got to be returned by and such and such and 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 it was really quite simple from from that standpoint, but where the what the what the toughest part was. Was getting the list of what it is that was absolutely needed. Uh and then, as I recall, we also talked about some optional coverages or not coverages, but optional pieces of equipment. That we could put on a uh on sort of a wish list kind of thing and that's where we, that's where we, it had, that's where it ended up and so um. Yeah, no matter, no matter how you slice this municipal business. Uh if there's one thing that we can do is we can burn up time uh uh just out of procedural stuff. Uh we can't buy toilet paper, we've gotta wait thirty days, you know.
Trust you on the toilet paper, no, I figure we're probably safe to move.
Uh since we're having a discussion at the podium, I, you know, normally it's just between us for this part of the.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, are we still in public comment?
No.
Public comment.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought we were in.
We're on public.
Excuse me, so here, uh so but even then, we don't know, but uh. For clarification, cause I think what maybe is misunderstood here. And I I I think I what I heard you say, let me put it that way, is that once an RFP is done, then you take it out to places that sell this equipment. You don't have to do it over again every time, they just tell you, here's here's our bid for that equipment, so you just do the RFP first, that's all.
Right.
Is that right?
Although.
Well, I don't think that was understood.
What is happening is four times is. You you're exactly right, uh we determine what we need, the 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 the.
Fire people give us what the specs.
The vendor doesn't tell us what we need, we tell the vendor what we need. And then if the vendor comes back and says, well, everything that you want is fine and dandy, but. We don't do that, here's our, here's our consideration for that or our deviation from the RFP and then we can make a decision.
Right.
Absolutely, that's.
But the but the seven of us don't know how to make that our, the specs for that RFP.
Exactly.
Well, you have now.
I.
Yeah.
And so I I just for a point of clarification, I have cross referenced with two uh municipal um. I don't know how I source well, being one, um which is a conglomerate. Um but the first one I checked was to Omni Partners, which does municipal purchasing. So I put, I sent those entire that spec list. Are there any dealers that would meet the criteria for putting together or not or or responding uh through that system, which is. One legal means of diverting away from an RFP process. And so I have not heard back from Sourcewell, I heard back from the Omni Group that they could not find with those specific. Items that they could not find a dealer that could fabricate. Within their reach. So it's not that I haven't done anything with it, I've had a couple of other things, I've. How many times I go through the first federal, three, four times, I mean, I've continued to help wherever I can when I have time.
Preapproval that we spec it out and do.
I don't know what role that is in a preapproval.
Well, there's, yeah, there's a lot of outline area fire departments that have this with the cool, like a preapproval, they spec it all up under their township board. Vote on it and order it that night.
Well, then that's their municipal function. Well, cause we're getting dramatically off track in regards to public comment versus employee.
I first we were looking at possibly getting you, you'd asked me to research that.
We gotta live in our means.
Being so tight. These departments that are, I'll get notified if something within twenty four hours, the vehicle's gone, we couldn't even get our board meeting together that quick. But these departments were able to pull this off, where they have preapproval from their municipal municipality to get this purchase done. So when a when a event comes up where they can look at something that's available, like if a salesman calls me, I just had it happen two days ago. Where the the salesman called me, said, hey, would you guys be interested in this, soon as I looked at, truck was too tall, I sent him a note back, he goes. Oh, sorry, even if you didn't want, I just had a commitment from the department, they're gonna pay something. I don't know how they.
So and and that would be, if you wanna make a recommendation to the policy and procedure manual to. Uh look at and amend our purchasing policy, then that's the page that.
It's a time thing, it's really a time.
Understand it, sir.
Because.
Truly, truly do.
Or get a sample from another municipality that has like a preapproval.
Well.
Policy, I mean, we could look at it too.
Well, yeah, yes, trusty Ryan, anything.
I don't know, I here's, you you know, the probable part of it is you're buying used equipment, you understand that, you don't have the money for new, whatever it is you need. But. Are you telling me other departments are buying it? Without an inspection, for example, of the systems?
There's a company out there called Runley Mom.
So who's gonna take, if that's the case and we do that, we approve that for you to do, who's gonna take responsibility and accountability for that? You know, the accountability comes back to us, but.
They will do a site on scene inspection or you can do a go there inspection. So they'll give you thirty days if it's a site unseen and you buy that vehicle, if there's anything that you don't like about it, you can return it.
So this is, we're we're gonna direct this entire conversation to uh policy, if you wanna en- engage in changes to our policy. Shoot Laura an email and we'll schedule.
Uh for what it's worth, I would be interested, I. I would be interested to know what that means, what you just said.
Yeah.
If somebody is sticking their neck out that far, I'd like to see the small print.
Yeah.
Or take it to fire committee first.
Yeah.
And then.
Yeah.
So, so, yeah, so is there any? Kinda meandering through, but and again, public comment as a public citizen, not employees.
Correct, I just wanted to provide some information for trustee Reiner, he posed the question as to how many structured fires. There have been at least nine in the last three months, actual full structure fires and.
Flagoration.
On the uh report that you received from the fire department, there are seventeen fire calls. At least nine of those, probably more of those were actual structure fires so far, just this year. Uh all nine. Were at re- were at residential, two of them I know, two two that I know were outbuildings that are residents.
Yeah.
But the rest were residential. Yes.
What is it called on this list?
Fire calls.
Oh, fire.
Or other calls.
Right here, where it says. Third line down, I believe it is.
So.
Fire calls.
Fire calls are structures and then there's. Other.
Grass fires are.
So what's vegetation fire?
Vegetation or your your grass fires.
So what is?
Other.
Other. So vehicle fires.
The other calls are just your off the wall. Yeah, I I'm locked out and we got toned out the other night for someone locked in their bathroom.
Leave me in there, huh? So.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
You were on there.
So just to keep this, uh because.
I guess.
Yeah, and just as as far as as trustee uh Reiner asked about our personnel outside the ambulance. Usually at that point, then the patient has been placed into the ambulance and they're standing by in case the ambulance needs further assistance or needs a driver to the hospital. Um but as far as response times, there's times where I'm on scene. North side areas, ten minutes or more before the ambulance gets on, it's just depends on where the location.
It's always an ebb and flow and it's not ever fair to either party to say. Logistics out of logistics, uh I don't know how you drive, but I can get to downtown quicker than eight minutes, uh Mr. Johnson. And the South Side probably in the total time of eight minutes, but that being said, um they're all recommendations, so things on a plate. Um is there any additional public comment?
I just wanna make two quick things, I was game, oh, Kevin Gallo, um I've lasted twenty twenty truck kept. Because in the past, we've used my truck, other people's trucks, moving frozen gear, wet gear, dirty gear and. I don't wanna take on that risk and so that makes me happy, uh second thing I wanna mention, three weeks ago, my lunch hour, uh call came out for a CPR. Lieutenant Watson, Watson, we first there on scene, we're on scene by ourselves for at least eight minutes, uh started CPR, I'm breathing. And I drove uh the ambulance to the hospital, won't be sure that'll be up on the wall, I licensed EMT, same life.
Well, I wanna say.
You could.
Never doubt of your great services, gentlemen.
I heard I.
Remember we're citizens, not employees making public comment, that's a slippery thing, online, is there any public comment? If so, please use the bottom ellipsis, raise your hand or send a message so that we can identify you and take public comment. Again, this is the last opportunity for public comment uh on the regularly scheduled September twenty fifth, uh Board of Trustees meeting. Seeing no online comment, is there further discussion amongst the board? For the good of the order? Saying none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So have a motion on the table to adjourn, is there support?
Support.
Uh further discussion?
After adjournment?
No. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same, being earned at eight forty nine. Aye, oppose the same, getting adjourned at eight forty nine P M.